I call the Fairbanks North Star Borough Regular Assembly Meeting for February 22, 2018 to order. We are in the Mona Lisa Dressler Assembly Chambers, and we will start with a non-secrecy invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We give thanks for this day and ask for wisdom to give us, to guide us to have meaningful debates and make good decisions tonight for the people of the Fairbanks North Star Borough. We ask this and are thankful for the many blessings in our lives. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
I'd like to note for the record that Mr. Tackey and Ms. Dodge are both excused. Mr. Lajewski?
Here.
Mr. Quest?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Major?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Gray?
Here.
City of Fairbanks Representative Jerry Cleaver?
Here.
And School Board Representative Tim Dorrin?
Here.
And City of North Pole Representative Amy Thompson?
Here.
And Mr. Lawrence?
All right, thank you. A quick safety announcement. A quick safety announcement. There are three exits from this, from this room, only three. The one that you all came in, the wide, wide one with the exit sign over it, and there are two doorways, one to the right and one to the left of that big exit. Both the exit signs illuminated above the door. You go through those doors and just keep walking and they will get you out of this building. First item, I'm going to request for removal of items from the consent agenda and any other procedural matters or motions. Are there any items from the consent agenda or any other procedural matters that we need to address right now? All right, does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we move on to citizens' comments. Now, each person's comments are limited to three minutes, and the first, the first category of citizen comments that we're going to hear tonight involves a citizen may speak on agenda items not scheduled for public hearing, memorandums, bid awards, unfinished business, items proposed prior to previous meetings, reconsideration or notice of intent to rescind, resolutions or ordinances being advanced to public hearing on a different date. Citizen's comments on board of adjustment matters are not permitted. I have two people signed up for this first category of citizen comments. They are Christine Robbins and, boy, oh Helen, I guess it's Helen Renfrew. Nope, Flor, okay, Ps, maybe it's Flor MPs or...
That's me.
Prox, I'm sorry, Mr. Prox. You've got very, very good handwriting for a guy. Okay, we'll start with Christine Robbins, your name and address.
My name is Christine Robbins, 1340 Arctic Turn Drive, 99712.
Okay, proceed.
So, actually, and this is a question as well, if this isn't the right time to say it, but I had a problem with basically a conflict of interest issue for assembly members that have taken money from the union PACs, and I just kind of wanted to speak a word against that. But if that is, if this is not the correct time, then please advise me when.
Well, it is, we do have a matter before us tonight on that. It's going to be later on in the evening.
And it doesn't have public hearing?
It does not. Okay, well, then, then, yeah, then it's on the agenda, it's not, then now's the time to do it.
Okay, well, I would just want to say as a concerned citizen that I know that your rules allow for you to take donations from these unions and, and then kind of vote amongst yourself, that it's not a conflict of interest in the spirit of democracy, but basically that's majority rules, and if it's unethical, it's unethical, and I think that people who have accepted donations ought to be excused from making a decision on someone's union contract that's coming up because they were benefited. That's the exact definition of, you know, conflict of interest is that they benefited somehow, whether monetarily or, you know, some benefit via election or whatever. So, I mean, I just wanted you to consider that.
All right, Ms. Robbins, questions? Mr. Lajewski?
This is meant to be a friendly question, but I know she said unions, and we have the APA contract up, so I'm wondering if you would have a problem if, say, and I don't think like Aliaska has a PAC, but let's suppose Aliaska formed a PAC and they were trying to donate money to people who might want to give if the pipeline tax breaks, would that fall under the same boat of something that you would have a problem with, an assembly member who received money from a hypothetical Aliaska PAC voting to reduce their taxes, that sort of thing?
Well, as long as they're gonna, you know, basically scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. If they're going to receive a benefit in some way, shape, or form, I think that they ought to excuse themselves from voting on directly impacting this organization, whatever it may be.
Ms., uh, Ms., sorry.
Do you want me to...
Ms. Major.
So, I guess my question would be, I mean, are you just, do you feel like your comment in general is just applicable to the Borough Assembly, or would you say agree, for example, the president, who would have likely received campaign contributions from many different people, should he not be allowed to participate in signing laws that would potentially benefit people that he would have received campaign contributions from?
Um, I would put it more directly that if he were to receive campaign funds, you know, from a PAC that allowed him to get elected and then, basically, they were to come before him and get an exclusive monopoly in an industry, then I would have a problem with that because it excludes everyone else and, you know, it's just not, it's not the correct process to do things. So, yeah, I would have a problem.
I have a follow-on question. Do you know the Assembly's role in approving these, you know, quote-unquote contracts? You know, I guess your, your question was sort of aimed at questioning whether or not individual assembly members would be able to remain ethical and have integrity in making a decision, and I'm wondering if you're aware of the level of decision that they're, they're making in terms of, of the...
From what I understand, you're, you're going to be voting on renewing their contract at some level, and so if somebody has taken money from them, all I'm saying is that they're directly impacting and were impacted by that company, and maybe that just needs to be considered as it is a conflict of interest. I have no further questions.
Any other questions? Ms. Robbins, are you aware that the Assembly played no role in negotiating the contract? They are just tasked with approving or not approving the financial terms of the contract?
Um, I'm aware, for the most part, and definitely now, but I don't think that negates what I'm trying to say.
All right, any other questions?
Mr. Lajewski? All right, so I just want to summarize, make sure I got your point right. So, your specific problem for tonight is that the APA contract has a resolution to pass its monetary terms or approve them, and I think four assembly members have taken a thousand dollars from that union PAC, associated union PAC, most recent time they ran for reelection. So, that's your problem.
Right, I just think it'd be the ethical thing to excuse themselves, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Prox, your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Prox, 1015 Meadow Root. And I guess I'm kind of going down the same road. What made me decide to run for the Assembly, although so many years ago, was the one, one of the contracts or another was up for same-deal approval, and it was on the consent agenda. And a assembly member moved to take it off the consent agenda, another assembly member seconded, and the mayor just kind of walked out of the room, and within a half hour, the room was filled with union members. And it doesn't give a good appearance. And there really are some substantial levels, and I think that there is too much coordination, particularly the, the labor unions through the Central Labor Council. Lots of money over the years, ten thousand dollars for one, ten thousand five for another, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty bucks. You get into real money, and it really gives an advantage for those people. And, and I do think it is something that you have to really give some serious thought to. Another story, just when I did file, a check just came out of the blue. I got about, I don't know, ten or a dozen checks, one from, for five hundred bucks, and I thought, holy cow, am I going to have to take this serious or send the check back? And so I did, made a serious campaign, actually, got on the Assembly, and then there was an issue that came up, I don't know, eight, nine months later, between two communication companies, and it didn't have anything to do even with Assembly business, but I recognized the name, and you just can't get that out of your head when that happens. And it's, it's just something we need to really think carefully about, not just the labor unions, but any contract. I was involved with a initiative to make it a condition of a contract that the contracting company foregoes campaign contributions, just to prevent this appearance, if nothing else, of conflict. And I think it's more than an appearance, and I don't, I don't know, we need to give that some more thought, and at every level. It gets worse as you get to the state level and the national level. It's all PACs and groups that are controlling the outcome of elections and decisions, and the individual voice and the individual right is just going out the door, excuse me.
All right, Ms. Prox, I'm hoping that was...
That was not for you.
Okay. All right, any, any questions for Mr. Prox? Mr. Quest?
Thank you for your testimony. So, I kind of picked up in there, do you think that any organization that plans to do business with the Borough or like any political entity should then just forego any kind of campaign contribution?
Yes, yeah, I really do think that is something that we need to take serious at all levels of government. I don't mean to get too hard on, but it's just, you know, these are big numbers.
Sure, yeah, and I could follow up. So, the unfortunate reality, and I appreciate your concern, I share it, the unfortunate reality is there is a need for a certain degree of money in politics. Do you have a suggestion as to, like, you know, like, let's say you've got an entity like the state or the federal government, they're going to be doing business with lots of people, all of that money is now excluded from potential political, you know, under your suggestion. Do you have a suggestion for how politics should be funded otherwise?
Well, it, it should be funded by individuals or people that don't have a direct, and, excuse me, groups, businesses that have contracts. It's just too tempting to use that influence to get the right person that isn't in a position to approve their contract. And so then the alternative is that individuals would contribute to campaigns. It gets into the, well, I forgot, the Supreme Court decision, the recent Supreme Court decision.
Citizens United.
Citizens United, yes. That was really an interesting decision. They argued that the PACs that are not directly connected to a campaign, and I admit that's kind of tenuous at times, but they have a right to promote whomever they want, but when they contribute directly to the person running for office, that creates a whole different relationship. And as probably, you know, people don't like that, they don't like PACs independent of candidates, I guess. I'm not sure exactly what the deal is, but that would be the alternative, is that if I wanted to get together with my friends and support you as a candidate, that's one thing, but if I'm expecting a contract and I want to influence you, I would give you a campaign contribution. That's a whole different level of conflict, a relationship.
Give it briefly, I mean, so are you aware that the net cost of this, this contract to the Borough over the next three years is less than inflation, so I mean, it's effectively, in a way, costing the Borough less?
Yeah, and that really isn't the point, and it is, it is kind of too bad. The other thing that I learned on the Assembly was that my animosity towards Borough employees was completely unjustified. They're, they're very good employees that work for the Borough. I was really pleasantly surprised. So, that isn't the issue, it's this appearance of conflict, because the other thing that happens is all of the, when you do the budget, what is it, eighty percent of the Borough cost is, is labor. So, you're, you're not just approving the contract, but a couple of months from now, you approve all the spending that keeps everybody on, and there's, there's a real temptation to be more concerned about the Borough employees than the taxpayers. Just is, that's, that's just, there you go, there it is.
Ms. Major?
I just have one question, and it may be wrong of me to say, but I'll ask it. Was this an issue that you had been tracking for a while in terms of knowing that this contract was coming up for, for an ordinance or for a discussion today, had it not been for a post on a Facebook page by a fellow Assembly member?
No, this is something I pay attention to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I like to say I was involved with the whole initiative, and it's not, by any means, just the Borough, it's something we really need to, as a society, sit down and think about.
And I guess I just say that because in a way you could say that there is still some influence, right? I think the same thing that there's that, that it could go both ways, and that's, that's the only reason why I say that, thank you.
All right, any from Mr. Lajewski?
Got two questions if the presiding officer will let me. The first one, they're the same two that I asked the previous speaker. If hypothetically, Aliaska had a PAC, I don't think they do, and they were trying to donate to candidates who they believed were going to support special tax breaks for the property tax and the pipeline that came through, is that something that you think those, if that happened and they got elected, they maybe shouldn't be voting on that tax break?
No, because that's a whole different, it's a whole different thing. That isn't a contract with the, with the Borough, that's the taxpayers. But as long as you bring that up, I don't know, somebody who ran the Assembly a few years ago, when the Borough was trying to change the assessment for the pipeline owners, for the pipeline, and one Assembly member happened to be the wife of somebody who worked for one of the owner companies in no management capacity, no decision-making capacity at all, and she was not allowed to be involved with any of those executive meetings about that case. And that, to me, that was wrong. She, she had no influence, he had no influence. That went the other way, but they felt strongly enough about that that she was not allowed to be involved with any of those meetings. And on the other hand, we're allowed to take campaign contributions from an organization that contracts with the Borough.
The second part of the question?
Go ahead.
It was just, so to summarize your, the core, I know we talked about a lot of different things, it's just that we are considering APA approval through a resolution, and they have an associated PAC that donates to some Assembly member who brings campaigns, and you, that's what you're uncomfortable with, that specific thing.
Right, it's the contract.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Prox. All right, move on to the next category of citizen... Well, all right, Vivian, you're on the other, well, I think that would qualify as well, but come on up, you can do it now.
Out of the proper procedure, Harry.
Yeah, it's pretty confusing, these different categories.
Sorry.
State your name and address.
Vivian Stiver, 523 Second Avenue, for about ten more days. I'm hearing the same issue about the conflict of interest. We all know there are donations that come from everyone. We all know people who donate ten dollars to us, we'll feel very bound that we do as they please. So, sometimes it's not necessarily about the amount of money. I think for me, that I find most alarming is when you are in a current campaign and you have a contract come up. So, you're currently running, you receive this large amount of money from someone you're going to approve, and I find that problematic. I, I think that bothers me more than you ran, you know, two years ago and the contract's up. I mean, if you're currently running, that's pretty direct, you've gotten this large amount of money from this group and you're going to vote on their contract. So, one thing I did learn is having a conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest, you can ask your attorney and she can say, no, because I don't believe you directly financially benefit. But it comes to you, what does your conscience say to you? How free are you in your own mind if you believe that there's conflict or possible perceived conflict, you can say that you're abstaining from voting? You can make that choice all on your own, and that might be a good thing to do. And as far as funding campaigns without contributions, I have the solution. We do the great American thing called capitalism, and every American can watch every candidate because what they're doing, the networks will sell advertising to four debates for the elections, you'll be televised, you'll be on social media, and TV stations make money, you don't have to go out beg for money, and everybody can sit in their living room and hear what you have to say. And I think that would be a great way to run elections. I think that's all I have to say.
All right, Mr. Roberts?
So, do you realize that the, this Assembly does not have rights of conscience and that we've written into our code that we're not allowed to abstain even when we feel that it violates our rights of conscience to vote on a particular issue?
I would still abstain because you're here, hopefully principled, ethical, you know what's right and wrong, your attorney gives you an opinion, but you know, each one of you know. Change your rule, I mean.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next citizen comments are going to be on items other than those appearing on the agenda, and so this section is for anyone to speak on anything not scheduled on this agenda. I have Helen Renfrew signed up, and there's an open seat if anybody else wants to make a comment. Helen, your, your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Helen Renfrew, 1915 Central Avenue, and I am here this evening to provide you all with an update from the Explore Fairbanks Meetings and Conventions Department. I'm disappointed to announce that Fairbanks did not win the bid for state basketball tournaments from 2019 through 2023. The tournaments will stay in Anchorage at the Alaska Airlines Center. We did get valuable information, though, that will help in 2022, which is when we'll next get an opportunity to bid on basketball, the ASAAs March Madness. That board, though, has not seen the last of us, as Fairbanks will be bidding on the statewide wrestling tournaments for 2019 through 2021 at their board meeting in April. Next week, we are hosting four meeting planners from Bespoke Business Solutions on a familiarization tour in Fairbanks. Bespoke won the State of Alaska Meeting Planning Contract, and we're looking forward to showing them all of the fine facilities and accommodations for meetings and events in Fairbanks. I would like to thank and congratulate Mayor Castle, who isn't here. Two weeks ago, Explore Fairbanks hosted the Golden Heart Gala, where we thank our volunteers and meeting ambassadors from the previous year. Mayor Castle helped us pass out awards to the meeting ambassador recipients, and along with Jeff Stepp, received one himself for hosting the Arctic Mayor's Roundtable during the week of the Arctic in May. Altogether, we honored forty-two local Fairbankses who brought twenty-nine meetings and almost three million dollars to our community. Their efforts, along with the five hundred and sixty-five meetings that Explore Fairbanks and our partners tracked, contributed more than nine point two million new dollars into our local economy last year. We've been compiling standard hotel statistics from our participating partner hotels for the last three years. In 2017, for the first time, March was the month with the highest aggregate occupancy percentage at eighty-two and a half percent. Fewer guest rooms are available in March versus the summer months, so the higher occupancy percentage doesn't equate to more hotel room nights, but it does reinforce the growth Fairbanks has seen in the winter visitor market. During the last three years that we've been keeping statistics, Fairbanks properties' average daily rates have seen slow but steady growth, and the annualized hotel occupancy has exceeded the national averages for the last three years.
All right, thank you. Questions and comments, Mr. Lajewski?
I'm just curious if we're tracking or able to track Airbnb vacancy rates in addition to the hotel vacancy rates.
The reason we're able to track the hotel vacancy rates is because they actually report them to us. All of the major hotels with sixty rooms or more are partners with Explore Fairbanks, and some of them, although not all of them, are willing to share that type of data with us. Airbnb, less so. So, usually when tracking these types of statistics, Smith Travel Research is the national and international expert at this, but Smith Travel Research figures for Fairbanks only account for about thirty-five to forty percent of the rooms in Fairbanks in those larger hotels, and our statistics are represented by seventy percent of the available room inventory.
All right.
I can tell you that Airbnb, though, has grown by a factor of four in the last couple of years in Fairbanks.
And how do you know? I mean, that's an estimate, I presume.
Well, because we go on and look. We actually physically go on to the Airbnb site. One of the things that we've offered for both, for those large citywide conventions, so the Arctic Science Summit Week, during the week of the Arctic, during AFN, we help provide connections for incoming visitors to the Airbnb site because it helps to supplement the hotel rooms we have when we have those large citywide events.
All right, Mr. Quest?
Thank you. You said that the occupancy rate for hotels in Fairbanks is higher than the national average?
Correct.
Do you know what the national average is?
I do. So, in 2015, the national average was sixty-five point six percent, and Fairbanks' aggregate average was sixty-seven point five. In 2016, the national average was sixty-five point five, and Fairbanks's was sixty-eight percent. Twenty sixteen was a great year. And in 2017, the national average rose to sixty-five point nine percent, and ours was sixty-seven point four.
Thank you. You spoke earlier about bespoke meeting, like a meeting service, meeting planning?
Bespoke Business Solutions, and they are meeting and event planners. It's a company that's based out of Anchorage, and the State of Alaska Meeting Planning Contract came due toward the end of 2017. Bespoke is a relatively new player in the market. They've got a good events base in Anchorage, but none of their planners have actually planned anything in Fairbanks before. So, we're bringing up the primaries as well as a couple of their contractors to make sure that they know that Fairbanks is open and welcome for them to bring statewide and State of Alaska meetings and events here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and as always, thank you for reinvesting Vex dollars in destination marketing.
All right, yeah, good, without saying that. All right, we have an open seat. Mr. Doughty, your name and address.
Hey, Mr. Doughty Jr., 1051 East Wood Lane, Fairbanks, Alaska, 99712. I would like to commend the lady that testified here last meeting about her buying another wood stove, she brought her kids. She wanted to make you aware of the problems she was having with burning wood and keeping her family alive. That's why I demanded it. Now, the department in charge of it, they knew the rules, they guided her, but if you look at how much trouble it put her out, trying to find her guidelines, find the guidelines to follow, the individual cannot do it in this Borough anymore. It all comes back to the department making their decisions. That's wrong. They want an argument, they lost the humility. I'd just like to come say that she did a very good thing, for as I'm concerned. We need more of that. We are looked over by the EPA, the state, and we're on the lower end of the totem pole, but we're also on the lower end of the energy supply here. We think we're going to get gas in a few years, and we're going to have to deal away with these wood stoves we're buying now. That's the objective. Man's been using wood since the very beginning, and we think we're going to deal away with it. That takes some thought. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doughty. Any questions, any questions? All right, thank you. There are two seats open. Any other citizens wish to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda? All right, moving along, move along to the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda passes all routine matters indicated by an asterisk on the agenda. Consent agenda items are not considered separately unless an Assembly member so requests. In the event of such a request, the item is returned to the general agenda. Does anyone need to declare a possible conflict of interest for items on the consent agenda? Are there any other items to be removed, or any items to be removed from the consent agenda before it's read? All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the consent agenda?
Communications to the Assembly, Item C, memorandum from Mayor Castle recommending the reappointment of various, various fire service area commissioners. Item D, memorandum from Mayor Castle recommending the appointment of various service area commissioners. Consideration of calendar new business ordinances to be referred to the committee or commissions. Item A, ordinance number 2018-07, and ordinance amending the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code 20 dot 16 dot 020, lease of Borough land. Sponsor, Assembly Member Roberts, refer to the April 4, 2018 Land Management Advisory Commission with recommendation due back by April 9, 2018. Consideration of the calendar new business ordinances to be introduced in advance to public hearing. Item A, ordinance number 2018-08, and ordinance amending the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title V regarding elections. Sponsors, Assembly Member Dodge, Mayor Castle, and Assembly Members Cooper and Lajewski. Refer to the Committee of Hope on March 1, 2018, advance to March 8, 2018 for public hearing. Item B, ordinance number 2017-21U, and ordinance amending the fiscal year 2017-18 budget by appropriating a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the school district facilities maintenance reserve to the capital projects fund for school district facilities management warehouse building water service replacements. Sponsor, Mayor Castle. Refer to the Finance Committee on March 1, 2018, advance to March 8, 2018 for public hearing. Item C, ordinance number 2018-09, and ordinance amending Chapter 8.48 of the Fairbanks North Star Borough Code regarding hotel motel tax reporting and collection. Sponsor, Assembly Member Roberts. Refer to the Finance Committee on April 5, 2018, advance to April 12, 2018 for public hearing, and that concludes your consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Gray and a second from Ms. Major to approve the agenda. Is there any opposition to approving? All right, it's been approved. Move on to communications to the Assembly. This is a referral to the Assembly from Deborah L.R. Brady, Chief Financial Officer, regarding Ken R. Leary's request for waiver, waiver of penalty and interest on delinquent property taxes on parcel number 0426393. It's on page six. Mr. Leary, you may as well come up to the, to the table. Does any Assembly member need to declare a conflict or make any disclosures concerning this request? All right, Ms. McDonald, would you, on behalf of the Chief Financial Officer, provide us a report, and it's limited to ten minutes?
Our write-up is pretty clear, Mr. Leary's tax payment was postmarked on November 2nd. We received it on the 3rd, based on the code. Ms. Brady could not make the decision or myself, so it is being referred to you based on the postmark date, and Mr. Leary's comments of him putting it in his box, his business's box outgoing mail, and it being picked up on the 1st.
All right. Okay, Mr. Leary?
Yes.
You will have up to ten minutes to, to, to basically comment on this, on your appeal and, you know, your request for a waiver of the penalty, so if you would, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, Ken Leary, 341 Sineke Hills Court. Every year when I get the tax bill from the Borough, it goes on our refrigerator and it's highlighted with the dates that it's due. Every year I send it in on the day that it's due. A few years back, I got a letter from the borough saying that it was late. When we went to find out what had happened, I filed an appeal, and that was accepted. And what had happened then, when Cliff Everett was alive, he would take the mail to the post office and mail it. And so I asked Cliff the next day after I received the first letter, if you mailed my letter? He said, yes. I said, what time do you mail it? He says, a little bit after 5:00. I said, what did the box say? He says, the last pickup is 6:00. Come to find out, the last pickup was at 5:00, but the post office did not change the notification on the box. When I appealed that, it was accepted by the borough, no problem. This time, I mailed my second tax on November 1. I have a witness who's the receptionist at Everett's who was never contacted by the borough to affirm that it was mailed on the 1st. Why would the receptionist know I mailed my taxes? Because I made it a point to point out to her that I was mailing it and to remind other people at Everett's that today's November 1, and your taxes are due. Willie Sheehan, he's the mail person at Everett's, he's been there nine years, he comes and picks it up. There is no post office box outside the building. I've got pictures of outside the building if you'd like to see it. I've got a picture of the collection box on top of the desk at the reception where the mail was placed. By sending my appeal letter, on the bottom of that letter, you can read the paragraph, I mailed it on December 12. If you look at the letter, the envelope that came in, it was postmarked December 12. I have faith in the post office. I believe when I mail my letters on the day that they're due, they're postmarked accordingly. Talking to Willie, Willie says sometimes the post office puts the wrong date on the postmark. You know, he didn't want to come and verify that, but it may happen. So I'm appealing because I did pay my taxes, and I paid them on the day they were due.
All right. We're going to proceed to...
Add one more comment. Sheila Dowd, she's a receptionist. She saw me put the letter in the box. She saw the mailman pick up the letter. I came back up about 8:45, asked Sheila if the mailman, Willie, had come and picked up the letter. She said, yes. I forgot about it until I got the letter. She's willing to take a phone call tonight if you want to call her to verify that she is my witness that I put my letter in the mailbox at Everett's, November 1, Wednesday, 2017.
Right. Yes, now we now have an opportunity, this Assembly will take, can ask questions of Ms. McDonald. Start with Ms. McDonald, and then you can ask questions of Mr. Leary. Mr. Quest.
May I correct understand that the dollar amount of this penalty is approximately $19?
Yes, a little bit over. $18.15 penalty and 63 cents in interest.
And about an appeal like this, I mean, about how many hours does it take your department to process something like this?
It could take anywhere from 10 to 20 hours between my staff time and my time and assistant manager and the CFO's time.
Thank you.
Mr. Malojewski.
Do you really care about the $20?
No.
Or is it...
I could give it, but it's about $20.
It's about the principle of the matter?
Well, it's that and the statement in my letter when I called, you should just pay it. That's probably what pisses me off more than anything. If I owed it, I would pay it. But not to get a fair hearing in front of you people or for even this person to contact a witness who'll verify that I put that letter in the mailbox on November 1. You can hear it, my voice upset me though, so.
Any other questions? Mr. Cooper.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Leary, at this point?
You can, yeah, either, either.
Mr. Leary, I have a question. Mr., was Willie Sheehan who was the mail person in here?
Yes.
Is that an Everett's employee or is that a postal carrier?
No, it is not. It's a US Postal Carrier.
So am I correct in understanding that Mr. Sheehan, a US Postal Carrier, picked up the mail on the 1st?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Leary, I've got a question.
Okay.
What principle are you talking about?
What principle?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Malojewski asked you, why did you do this? It's not for the money.
Because I mailed my taxes the day they were due. I don't feel I should be penalized when they mailed the day they were due, and just because the letter was mismarked with a post stamp or a postmark. If they were a day late because I mailed them a day late, I already have written a check.
So you feel that a customer of the US Postal Service has a right to have that letter postmarked the day...
No, I believe when I give my letter to the postal service and they take control of it, that's when the letter should be postmarked. Just like when you go to the US Postal Service postmark information page, that's what it says, when the post office takes command of your letter. They took command of my letter on November 1, 2017.
All right. Ms. McDonald, do you have, based upon, do you have anything to add at this point?
No, I don't.
All right.
Can I show you what the letter was put in?
Sure.
I'll show you outside the building. We have paper boxes outside the building. We don't have a post office box. Mr. Everett just delivered, and now the post office person comes in. Where's the box? It's addressed with the post office. Here's his mail truck. It comes every day between 8:00...
Further questions? Mr. Cooper.
We have a question actually based on the photos. I see in the photo of the basket, there's a sign next to it that says, "All mail postmarked with today's date must be mailed today." Is there a way to postmark mail at your place of work?
Mr. Cooper, you know what I'm going to do from now on, don't you? You read my mind. Those postmarks are business mail for Everett's. I've gotten permission from the owner, Rob Everett, so now postmark my letter so we don't have to waste time and your people's time.
You've got a meter there where you can...
We have a meter there, and I thought about that, and it's never happened in the past where the mail wasn't marked the day I mailed it. So I never thought about it, but you believe me, next September 1, there's going to be a postmark on that envelope from Everett's and November 1.
Any other questions? I got one. Mr. Leary, would you consider mailing your payment on August 31st and October 31st rather than waiting on the day of the deadline?
It's a consideration, but I like to pay my stuff when it's due. And it was due on September 1, I believe, and November 1. Could I get around that by mailing it? I probably could, yes.
Well, actually, it comes due in July, July 1 and September 1. It's just late September 1 and November 1.
Yeah. I'm going to do what Mr. Cooper there, and he and I discussed, is put a postmark on it. That way, we won't go through this again.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
I move to waive the penalty and interest on delinquent property taxes on parcel number 0426393.
Second.
There is a second. Mr. Roberts has moved to waive the penalty and grant the appeal, effectively grant the appeal. We have a second from Mr. Malojewski.
So I think based on the evidence, which I'll qualify, that he mailed it on the 1st, and I'll qualify that saying, I think his word is good enough that we don't need to do the investigation and take more time and money for this de minimis amount of dollars. In fact, I think we need to change the code so that if it takes as much time and money as this took, that finance has given the ability to make these exceptions themselves. And so maybe in the future, we can arrange that to happen. But for now, I would say based on the evidence he's presented, and my belief in that, his veracity on that evidence, that we should waive this penalty and interest, and that's it.
All right. Any further comment? Mr. Cooper.
Well, I think the first point Mr. Leary's already picked up on, I know from experience that you can deliver something to the post office, and unless you ask them to postmark it and see them put the postmark on it, it doesn't always work, so.
I used to take it to the post office.
So in the future, get that postmark on there. But I'm going to support the grant of the waiver here. I think that Mr. Leary made a good faith effort based on his past experience, put it in the box on the day it was due, you know, tried to comply. Sometimes things like that happen, so.
All right. Ms. Malojewski.
Well, I'll be supporting this. I do have a request for Mr. Leary, and take this, I guess, in stride. I could be in your exact shoes and give the same advice to myself at some point in the future, but please don't waste the borough's time over 20 bucks again.
I tried through my appeal letter. That was my contention. So, I mean, the last time I appealed something similar to this, it was carried through without a problem, and then I didn't even have a witness. All I had was a statement from the post office saying they had the wrong pickup time on the box. So I tried.
All right. Still?
I just want to remind you of the standards set forth in your code, which is essentially that if you're going to waive penalties and interest, it has to be due to extraordinary circumstances that would result in a manifest injustice. And so, well, that can include a good faith attempt by a taxpayer to comply. They have to be in a situation that's different from a typical taxpayer making a late payment. So all taxpayers have the obligation to ensure their payment is either postmarked or deposited here at the borough. So I guess I just want to caution you against granting these because you're going to have to treat all similarly situated taxpayers the same if that is your standard, is that they don't have that responsibility to ensure the postmark or ensure that it's deposited here at the borough. So I just want to remind you of the standards that are in your code.
All right. Thank you. Further debate? All right. Madam Clerk, this vote.
Mr. Quest.
No.
Mr. Gray.
Yes.
Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Ms. Major.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Malojewski.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
No. Does anyone want to change their vote?
Five-two.
Five-two. The appeal is granted, five-two. Mr. Leary, I hope this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. We will take a break until 7 o'clock. I'm calling back into order the Borough Assembly Regular Assembly Meeting for today, February 22nd. Next item on our agenda are reports from representatives. We'll start with a report from the City of Fairbanks. Representative, Mr. Cleworth.
Thank you. Not a lot really to report, but I was noticing with some interest the borough's presentations on infrastructure needs, and thinking about that the other day. As you know, we have had some soil contamination in South Fairbanks, and there's a big price tag associated with that as we've tried to be very proactive on dealing with that. The way we deal with it is, last summer, we spent somewhere between $2 million and $3 million on their remediation. One mill of property tax in the city generates about $1 million. I'm sorry, $2 million, double that. So we're going to be looking at approximately a one-mill increase this coming year, unfortunately, under the Claims and Judgments provisions of the tax gap. You also are looking at a potential bond issue, and I don't know what the mill rate would be on that. And if Juneau is coming forward with some kind of a tax, it's going to be an interesting year. We, the majority on council, put a ballot proposition, as you know, back in October before the voters, to make up for the loss of revenue sharing that was defeated. So I just don't know what the environment will be this coming year, but I do know on the city side, we're going to be looking at at least a one-year hit. You know, when you're setting your mill rates or looking at that, you probably should be aware of, so. That's it. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cleworth, thank you. Questions? All right. Moving on to the report from the City of North Pole's representative, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, not a whole lot to report out of North Pole. Our water utility expansion project has broken ground, though, which will effectively double the size of the water utility in North Pole, and construction on that will continue, at least through the construction season into the fall. Also, Mayor Ward and Councilman Isaacson are down in Juneau right now, and that's all that I have to report.
All right. Well, thank you. Questions? Questions for North Pole? All right. Well, then we move on to the report from the School Board Representative, Mr. Dolan.
Thanks for the opportunity to be here. The district is continuing its work on the 2018-19 proposed budget, and we really want to encourage public comments, input ideas, any suggestions. They're really welcome. We accept them at all regular meetings, and we have also opportunity for people to check out our budget webpage on the district website, and there's a spot there where you can immediately give some feedback. At the end of March, on the 28th, we'll have a public forum to go over the budget. It'll be held at Ryan Middle School from 5:30 to 7:30. The board would also like to extend a thank you to Assembly Member Matt Cooper and to Mr. Jim Waylums for their presentation at our school board work session on Monday night on the budget, and we really appreciate it. Not only they're giving a presentation, but they took the time to attend the entire meeting and give us feedback and information. So public testimony is always welcome at our board, regular board meetings, as well as we'll have two upcoming budget work sessions on Wednesday, March 7, and Thursday, March 8, which will start at 5:30 each night. At our meeting just the past Tuesday, the board passed unanimously two resolutions that are thinker of note. Resolution 2018 number 13, Supporting and Advocating for Implementation of Alaska's Education Challenge, this is a statewide initiative, and Resolution 2018-14, Recognizing International Women's Day on March 8, 2018. This past week, Monday and Tuesday, we also had parent teacher conferences and preliminary reports. They were very well attended. And the last thing I wanted to comment on is that I've had a chance to visit quite a number of our schools, over 20 in the last couple of months, and just want to say, it is truly impressive to see what's happening, to get into the classrooms and see students and teachers, a lot of new initiatives with the personalized learning, which is really an extension of what we've seen for decades here, but really a lot of neat work. And at our board spotlight, each school is giving us a show of what's going on at their school, and I highly encourage people to kind of catch those as you can. And then our next board meeting is on Tuesday, March 6, so another opportunity for input to the board. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you. Questions for Mr. Dolan? All right. Well, I'd like to thank all three of you gentlemen for coming in and educating us as to what's going on with cities and the school board. Moving on to special orders. The first item is a marijuana license. I am a, I have recently represented the licensee in this matter. I've also represented Friends of Fox Springs recently, so I have a conflict. I'm going to hand this babble over to Mr. Cooper, and let him run the meeting for a while.
Thank you. I agree that you have a conflict, so. Thank you. Mr. Quest.
I have a potential conflict of interest. My mother-in-law and my father-in-law are cultivation licensees, and I believe that they, that would constitute a conflict of interest.
Mr. Quest. I agree that you have a conflict, so we'll excuse you from the dials. Any other conflicts to declare before we proceed? All right. Seeing none, the item before us is marijuana license new standard cultivation facility license number 14477. It's information at page 85 of our packet. This is for Fox Creek LLC, doing business as Fox Creek LLC, 2304 Old Elliott Highway, Fairbanks, Alaska, 99712. There is resolution number 2018-11, a resolution protesting new standard cultivation facility marijuana license number 14477, Fox Creek. Sponsor is Assembly Member Roberts. Information at page 89. And there's a second resolution, resolution number 2018-12, a resolution recommending the Marijuana Control Board approve new standard cultivation facility marijuana license number 14477, Fox Creek LLC, with a condition. Sponsor of that resolution is Mayor Castle. That is at page 92. So may we have a staff report on resolution 2018-11? Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so we're... This resolution seeks to protest based on the fact that the cultivation facility of license would operate in violation of federal law. Marijuana cultivation negatively impacts public health, and the location of the facility is adjacent to Fox Spring, an important public water source, and the Fairbanks Soil and Water Conservation District has issued a letter of concern regarding this proposed cultivation facility and its proximity to the spring.
Point of order, did that need to become a motion?
Not yet, Mr. Malojewski. We'll have staff reports and then public comment, and then we'll have motions on a resolution, so. Thank you. Does that conclude your staff report? Thanks. From the administration, Mr. Williams, can we have a staff report both on the marijuana license and on resolution 2018-12, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cooper. So, Bureau Administration, we did take a look at the new standard cultivation facility license for Fox Creek LLC, DVA, Fox Creek LLC. We did find that the licensee applicant would need a conditional use permit, and it's scheduled to be heard before the Planning Commission on February 27, 2018. Pursuant to that, we put forth a resolution, 2018-12, basically saying that the condition for the license is dependent on the conditional use permit. So that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll start public hearing. I don't have anyone signed up, but if anybody wants to provide input, now's the time, you can take a seat up here. The applicant will have 10 minutes. You can have your name and address for the record, and you don't have to hold the button down.
Grant Anderson. I'm an owner of Fox Creek LLC. I'm also at 302 Coll Street, Fairbanks, Alaska.
So you have 10 minutes if you want to...
Okay. Definitely. Just a couple points really quick to address the Fox Springs issue, which I think is probably the biggest issue I'm concerned about. First off is that we've been in contact with Ms. Bear over ADEC concerning getting appropriate permits, and I talked to her this morning. She said she has a report for us next week, so by the time I go in front of Planning, we should have an answer as far as whether or not we're, what we've provided her with engineered drives and everything else is adequate. Worst-case scenario is that we will be getting all of our waste material hauled off-site via a 2,000-gallon tank commercial carrier. We also have, when we went through ANCO, they also put a stipulation there as well, is that they have a letter from ADEC saying that we have met all their concerns for Fox Springs before the ANCO would be willing to release our license as well. So there's definitely a stopgap there. We, and then two more points really quick. We're also the adjacent property holders of all the adjacent property, the, I believe, 78 acres that surrounds that property, including the Source Springs for that well. So behooves us to protect that, not just as a community resource, but from a business perspective too, for the value of that property, and then as a retailer as well in cannabis. So you can imagine the negative impacts of destroying that well would have on our customer base. So as a member of the community, as a good neighbor, and then as a businessman too, it behooves us to protect that as a water resource, and we will. And then, onto my last point, is we do own two other cannabis businesses in the borough, and we operate those for over a year and a half with no complaints that I'm aware of. So that kind of wraps it up.
Great. Any questions? Don't see any, so thank you very much. We have two open chairs if anybody else would like to provide public testimony on the license or the resolutions. All right. Ms. Robbins.
My name is Christine Robbins, 1340 Arctic Turn Drive, and I live within just a mile or two of the Fox Springs, and I would like to ask you if there could be some sort of environmental impact study done first before you grant this, because it would directly affect my water supply. And anyway, I just feel it very important. And then also, at some point, somebody's got to address the stench. Please, for the love of God, address the stench. You know, you go by these marijuana places, and it's horrible. My kids, they just, anyway, they complain every time. What's that smell? And so anyway, hopefully you guys can address these at some point, so thank you.
Thank you. See if there's any questions? Don't see any, so thank you. Two empty seats if anybody else wishes to testify on this marijuana license or the resolutions. Not seeing anybody coming forward. Last chance if anybody wants to. So I'm going to close public hearing, and I would look for a motion on Resolution 2018-11.
I would move Resolution 2018-11.
Second. Been moved by Mr. Roberts and seconded by Mr. Lajewski. Discussion?
Yeah, so I'd like to reference the letter the Fairbanks Soil and Water Conservation District sent to the State Marijuana Control Board, or the state offices there. And so that's in your packet. And you can all see there that they had some concerns about how the waste would be disposed of and the water. And I do think that, that it would need a certain level of engineering. And so that hasn't been presented, and that this assembly probably wouldn't be the best one to look at. Hopefully ADEC is looking at that, and hopefully making sure that this is going to work out without impacting the Fox Springs. But in the meantime, I don't think that we should be, we should just be jumping into this, and I do think we need to support this protest and make sure that nothing happens to Fox Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Other discussion? And Ms. Major?
So I guess this one I am struggling a little bit with, just in the sense that, so I know the second resolution is, you know, if it passes, then it's pending the conditional use. And I'm just, there's a part of me that wishes, you know, that we could have that reverse, right? That we could have, we could know what that conditional use is, and whether or not it was approved, and then be able to, to vote on it. Because I do agree that, you know, protecting the water source is incredibly important. Sorry, I'm, yeah, I'm a little uncertain of how I'll vote on this, but I, I'm glad to see that at least there is that provision, that the conditional use be granted before it would go forward.
Do you have additional comments or questions, discussion, debate? I guess a question for Mr. Williams and Ms. Dolan. When is the conditional use permit set to be heard before the Planning Commission?
So the conditional use permit is set for the night of February 27th, so on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday. And I think Mr. Williams knows the 60-day deadline for...
Right. The 60-day deadline we're tracking is March 18th. We would have to, the Assembly would have to take some kind of action, or they would go to the Marijuana Control Board, is no action.
Thank you.
Sorry, can you say what that date is that we need to take?
March 18th.
Additional questions? Discussion?
Do we have enough time to, you know, move this to another date? Just I'll meet that. I don't remember our notice procedures.
You do. You have a meeting, let me look at the calendar real quick, I believe it's March 8th, maybe you broke it. Yeah, you have a meeting, March 8th. This could be postponed too.
We're still on the resolution protesting at this point.
Right, right. Nope, you have, no, I...
Thank you.
Wait, point of order?
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes, we're in discussion for this resolution. Can the motion be made to postpone it at this time, or does it need to, trying to get the order right?
No, you could, a member can move to postpone this resolution if...
Okay, when, I'm not making a motion yet, but whenever you guys are done discussing, I have a motion.
Is there any other discussion on this Resolution 2018-11?
I moved to postpone, what was that, Resolution 2018-11? I'm not looking at it right now, to March 8th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lajewski has moved to postpone to March 8th. Ms. Major is seconded. Discussion on postponement?
So...
Mr. Roberts?
I guess I'm opposed to postponing any of these, primarily because I won't be here to be able to cast, cast the vote. But I'm not sure, I agree on the other resolution that it would be nice to know what the Planning Commission is going to come up with, and maybe it could have been timed differently. But I'm, I'm going to be opposed to the postponement.
Additional comments? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Lajewski, sorry.
Well, I was going to say, this is a comment directed towards Assembly Member Roberts. It looks like we have five folks here, so if you vote no, you kill the whole thing. So if you want to keep it alive, you might want to vote yes. That's my only comment.
And if, if I can make a point here as well, which is that whether we postpone this resolution or the other resolution to the 18th, the Planning Commission will still take action. So it may become moot at that point, and no action needs to be taken, except Mr. Roberts' resolution, protesting on other grounds, but, or that there may be a full protest because the Planning Commission didn't grant the conditional use permit. So there's a lot of potential outcomes on March 8th. So I'd say that to say that it may all be decided on March 8th. So, okay, anything else on 2018-11? The motion to postpone 2018-11? Seeing none, Court?
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
And Mr. Cooper?
Yes. Would anyone like to change the vote?
Four one.
Motion fails, four one.
Three two.
Three two, sorry.
Three two, yeah.
Thank you. The motion to postpone fails, three two. So we're back to the motion to approve Resolution 2018-11. Is there further discussion on Resolution 2018-11? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's vote.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
One four.
It fails, one four. So we also have before us Resolution 2018-12.
Make a motion to postpone Resolution Number 2018-12 to March 8th.
Second.
I think we have to have the motion on the floor before we can postpone it.
Okay, sorry, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2018-12.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Ms. Major and seconded by Mr. Lajewski.
I'll make a motion to postpone Resolution Number 2018-12 until March 8th.
Seconded.
Then moved by Ms. Major, seconded by Mr. Lajewski, to postpone Resolution, consideration of Resolution 2018-12 to our meeting on March 8th. Discussion on the motion to postpone.
So I, I'll start. I really would like to allow this to go before the Planning Commission, allow them to work through the conditional use process and understand, you know, that, that piece of it before I feel comfortable voting, you know, providing just a full vote without knowing the details of the conditional use.
Mr. Gray? I'll just say I concur with that, and thank you, Ms. Major, for doing what I was going to do. Mr. Roberts?
So I'll just say for those who are interested that I'll be voting against postponement, because this resolution basically approves the facility once it gets to the conditional use, none of which have been turned down by the Planning Commission so far. And I think Fox Springs is more important than that, and so I want to see, I do not want to see this resolution pass.
Thank you. Additional comments? On the motion to postpone, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
And Mr. Cooper?
No. Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Three two.
Fails, three two. Okay, that takes us to the end of, yep, sorry. You got to vote on the resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. On the resolution. Any further discussion or debate on the resolution? All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Two three.
It fails, two three. All right, additional discussion? We're done with discussion, sorry. Back to the original agenda, so Mr. Lawrence, come back and take over, because you do a better job than I do.
We have to vote on the marijuana license.
There's no motion that's been made.
I guess we, we still have before us the marijuana license. It's got a little complicated procedurally here. No motion has been made to file no protest on the marijuana license. If the body wants, if a member wants to make a motion to file no protest, someone could do so. Otherwise, it would be a no-action situation. See anybody making a motion? Seeing none? Now we'll move on to the next piece of the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is Ordinance Number 201772, an ordinance repealing Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title 4.68, the Landscape Review Board, and amending Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title 18 to amend and clarify the landscape plan review and approval process. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. The materials are on page 93. There is additional information in your yellow folders. Mr. Williams, may I have a, may we have a staff report?
We do, we're getting set up here. We have Ms. Christine Nelson, our Director of Community Planning, and then from our Planning Commission, our Chairperson, Ms. Mindy O'Neill. Are you ready to go, Christine?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you. So this item is Ordinance 201772. It is basically a repeal of the Landscape Review Board and some changes in procedures in response to that. So the issues that brought this ordinance forward are a short planting season, and applicants need their landscape plans approval quickly. It's been difficult to get a quorum of the Landscape Review Board, because they are busy landscape professionals themselves, and they are running all over the place during planting season, and it's hard to get them here to sit down in a, in a meeting. So it also costs taxpayer resources more to schedule and notice a meeting, only to have to cancel it and reschedule it than it would to review the plans in-house by staff themselves. And the other issue is that applicants can't get their approvals in a timely manner, both approval of the plan and the inspections that they may need subsequently. So this ordinance does not change where landscaping is required. It will still be required in the special landscape area overlay district and for large-scale development anywhere in the borough. And I'll just quickly show you, this is the landscape area overlay district. It was created in response to densification in this area. This had been zoned already, rural estate zoning, and it's strictly adjacent to the city limits. When utilities and water and sewer came in, it had already been designated as urban land use in the comp plan. They wanted to upzone it to commercial, industrial, and heavier or more intensive residential. And so it was deemed appropriate that the city's landscape ordinance, which went just to this boundary, would essentially be carried over through this landscape overlay district. It also doesn't change the type or amount of landscaping that's required. That is staying static, and it is not being modified or amended in the code at all. It doesn't change the three methods by which a landscape plan can be prepared, the prescriptive method, which is pretty much wrote how many trees, what distances, how big the planting areas, the professional design method that allows landscape professionals and other qualified professionals to design an equivalent plan to the prescriptive, and then the alternate compliance method, which allows, based on conditions of the site, variations in landscaping to better suit the site or the plants or the situation. And we saw that. So this ordinance does repeal the Landscape Review Board, and it does change who makes the decisions on landscape plan approvals. Community planning staff would be the decision-makers for methods one and two, prescriptive and professional design. And then the alternative method would go to a hearing officer for public hearing, because there's more discretion involved in that decision-making process. This ordinance does add a plan modification process, so that once the plan is approved, if they want to change something a little bit, tweak the number of trees or the location, they can do that without going through a big, whole new plan approval. And then it adds more options for appeal or review of decisions. And those appeals and decisions reviews, including a process, a new process for an appeal of a hearing officer decision. So if staff makes a decision and it gets appealed to the hearing officer, there's also a process for that hearing officer's decision to be appealed to the Planning Commission. It also clarifies the process of appeal of a zoning permit that is dependent on a landscape plan. So if the landscape plan can't be approved because of deficiencies, and the zoning permit is denied, as a result, there's now a more clear appeal process for that zoning permit. And then it also adds a process for requesting an administrative hearing if the installation of the landscaping is deemed not to meet the plan. So that also is a new process that gives applicants more avenues to get their decisions reviewed. The benefits of this ordinance are that it's significantly faster for staff to review these plans. It could speed it up by two to three weeks, just because of the public noticing time that we have to have for a public hearing. And then it, again, uses less taxpayer resources, because we have to schedule, notice, staff the meeting, and prepare minutes. So if we don't have to do that, we can streamline our review process and save money. And it also saves the applicant's time and money during a short planting, planting season. So these items went, this ordinance went to the Landscape Review Board on January 5th, and in your packet, there is a letter from the Landscape Review Board Chair about their review and decision-making process. They did recommend approval, but they, their motion had a caveat, only if a working group of landscape professionals is established to review and make changes to the manual and advise the administration on landscape-related issues. And staff does support, both community planning and the administration supports a working group for landscape-related issues. They are the professionals, they have valuable technical expertise, and we hope to utilize them in any of those aspects. The question is whether or not it needs to be codified. And then the Landscape Review Board had a second, a proposed amendment to the decision, oh, sorry, not the decision, the definition of decorative fence, and it's here in red, and it talks about non-coded welded wire mesh. So the Landscape Review Board felt that coded wire mesh qualified as a decorative fence, but non-coded, that would rust and discolor, would not. So this is their proposed amendment. And just to put this in context, I'm going to show you some pictures of what decorative fences, based on this definition, look like, so that you can put it in context and decide whether or not this amendment is appropriate. So the definition specifically lists picket fences. It doesn't specifically reference wood lattice, but it talks about open fences. A split rail, it definitely refers to, wrought iron, there's another wrought iron. Here's some examples locally of decorative open fences. These are Cushman Street, and then several along St. East to the front, to Front Street. And these, staff definitely agrees, are decorative fences. The ordinance, or sorry, the definition specifically disallows chain link, chain link fences, sorry. It doesn't say coded or uncoded. This is a coded one. Obviously, the galvanized ones are not coded. It specifically excludes barbed wire fences. And then even with the amendment, these are non-coded welded wire fences that would be excluded. But these are coded wire fences that, if the amendment is moved forward, would be allowed. Community planning staff doesn't consider this to be decorative enough to fit into the landscape ordinance. And that provision about decorative fences basically allows for buffer landscaping, to remove an entire row of trees to allow an open fence. So the purpose of a decorative fence is that it has aesthetic appeal and interest, not just a barrier, because you're removing trees and substituting something else. And so this is the, again, suggested definition from the Landscape Review Board. And then the Planning Commission heard the item on January 16th, and the Planning Commission Chair is here to elaborate on their thinking and decision-making process.
Thank you, Christine. For the record, my name is Mindy O'Neill, and I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. As Ms. Nelson noted, we heard this on January 16th, and our discussion was very minimal. We approved the ordinance. One consideration was with the work group. We didn't amend the ordinance, but there was some concern that without codifying it, the work group would not, there was a potential for it to go away. And we felt that since that recommendation had come from the Review Board, it was something that should be considered and, I guess, maintained. And staff, I think, agreed, as testified today. The only other thing that we discussed was a question on the appeal rights, which Ms. Nelson addressed. This actually adds more options for appeal, appeal and review. So due to the infrequent meeting and the lack of the quorum, we felt that there was streamlining here that could, that could really benefit the borough and the citizens of the borough, and that this ultimately serves our community more efficiently, effectively, and timely.
All right, thank you. Does that conclude the staff report?
It does, thank you.
All right, we will now begin public hearing on this ordinance. I have Deborah Coons has signed up to testify, and there's another chair available if anybody else wishes to. Ms. Coons, your name and address, please.
Deborah Coons, 2990 Moose Mountain Road, Fairbanks, 99709. I am here to represent the Landscor, Landscape Review Board. And as I understand it, you have in your yellow packet the addendum to our minutes that, where we did support Ordinance 201772 with a couple caveats, one specifically about the decorative fence wording. And we also, and also, Ms. Nelson spoke to that in our memo to the Assembly, and that's on page 107 of your electronic. So basically, I just wanted to speak to the fact that in the ordinance, on line 62, it says, "Fence decorative shall mean an open fence other than a chain link fence or barbed wire fence indicated intended to decorate, accent, or frame a feature of the landscape." Decorative fences are often used to identify a lot corner or lot line, a frame or driveway, walkway, or planning pit. Decorative fences shall include, but not limited to, split rail, picket fence, wrought iron, and similar open fences. And that's what we're trying to, to identify, is that the open fencing is, as long as, galvanized is actually considered coating. So as long as it's coated, meaning if it has galvanized zinc, PVC, painted, anything to prevent rust, rusting, it could still be considered a wire fence. That could be very decorative, as you saw in some of the pictures. What we were trying to prevent is the rusted open wire fence, which is cheaper, it's very utilitarian, and it looks horrible. It's not decorative at all. So that was number one. And then also with the part about the working group, the Landscape Review Board, we didn't find that it wasn't going to be codified, just because of the process that would have to be. We would trust the Planning Commission and others to support us in having an ad hoc working group, so that we could talk to just the landscape manual, if ever, and whenever it needs to be modified. And do you have any questions?
All right, Ms. Coons, thank you. Questions? Mr. Cooper?
Thanks, I just want to make sure I understand, so what you're, what you're trying, I'm looking at the proposed definition up there, that what you were expressing was that you wanted non-coded welded wire fences to be considered non-decorative. Is that an addition that you were suggesting?
That's correct. That is not decorative. But coded is acceptable. And that would be on line 66, because it says, "And similar open fences."
Thank you.
Further questions? Just curiosity, Ms. Coons, what is your profession?
I work at the borough.
Okay.
I have a degree in natural resources, and I'm a master gardener for 25 years, and I'm a tree steward certified.
All right. Did the, did the Commission have any landscape architects on it?
No. There's an arborist and a retired UAF professor at the garden, and then a professional plant, nursery professional.
Any further questions? All right. Does anybody else wish to testify on this, this ordinance? Come on for it. Thank you, Ms. Coons, and thank you for your service. Mr. Prax, your name and address?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Prox, 1015 Mitteroo, North Pole. And I'm not sure, I'm not real comfortable agreeing with what you're doing ever, so I'm a little hesitant, but this looks like a good idea. I, I support the concept of letting the planning department approve somebody's landscape plan, I guess. I've actually had pretty good luck with the folks in the planning department. They seem to know what they're doing and their objective, and as helpful as they can be. So no objection to that, and that should speed up the process, and that's a great deal. I looked at this actually quite a bit, because a friend of mine ran into a problem with the landscaping. He needed a bond and the time delays and whatnot. It turned out to be quite a hassle for what I thought was a small project. And I think we still need to work on this some more to make sure that it is clear for the planning department. There was some conversation tonight. The lady before me, if I understood her correctly, galvanized chain link fence was considered decorative in her mind, but if I understood the lady from the planning department, it was not considered decorative. So, and I am not sure where the planning overlay and if it just applies to large-scale developments or whatnot. I did, actually did put some time in that, and I would have had to put several more hours in to try and understand what the ordinance was getting at and what the current ordinance was getting at. And it's awful hard to speak to that. I know, I don't want to get handsome as a criteria, because then I'll get run out of town, and I don't want to have that threat, you know? But anyway, no, seriously, I do think that we need to give a lot of thought, so that these little details can't be misunderstood. A non-coded, well, I don't know. I don't know what non-coded, I'm not a professional. That's my only concern with this. But other than that, I don't think it goes backwards, as far as I can tell. So that's a good deal. And it does go forwards in letting the planning department make it.
All right. Questions for Mr. Prax, Mr. Roberts?
So, speaking of possibly confusing terms, did you have a chance to listen to the work session where we discussed this later? There was lots of confusion on what exactly was going on.
I did not, but I...
Quite entertaining.
I wouldn't be surprised. A couple of pictures might be a good idea.
Well, there were pictures, and there were problems with the pictures.
It's, was it beauty is in the eye, the beholder?
But you did recognize the conflict that just happened between the two speakers, and so...
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Quist?
I have a question for staff, I think. Am I correct in understanding that in both, the current definition and the proposed definition of decorative fence, chain link of any kind is excluded?
Correct.
Thank you. All right, any more questions for Mr. Prax?
Thank you.
Thank you. There's two seats open. Anybody else wish to come forward and testify on this ordinance? Seeing none? Public, public comment is closed. I'll accept it. We have a motion to adopt. We have a motion for Mr. Cooper and a second from Mr. Gray to adopt the ordinance. This is ordinance number 201772, an ordinance repealing Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title 4, Chapter 68, Landscape Review Board, and amending Fairbanks North Star Borough Code Title 18 to amend and clarify the landscape plan review and approval process. So, Assembly debate and questions for staff. Mr. Cooper?
Mr. Ms. Nelson, so just so I understand, it sounded like Ms. Coons indicated that the Landscape Board's intent was that non-coded welded wire mesh fencing would be considered non-decorative, and therefore excluded from decorative. And is that, that's what you're objecting to, or?
No.
Okay.
Staff would like to see all welded wire fence to be considered non-decorative.
Okay. So how does, I admit perhaps this is a question for Ms. Dolan, how does that work with the last phrase of the definition that says, "Or similar open fences"?
So I think there's, well, at least if it's adopted without an amendment, I think there's a legislative record about what that's interpreted as, and then as long as staff has some type of administrative discretion on how they interpret it, and they're consistent in that, I think that would be the interpretation.
Ms. Nelson, what?
But we would welcome clarification, because I personally don't consider galvanization a coating. And we've had this issue with cell towers, when a decision says galvanized, when they really meant bronze or silver. So more clarification of what you do think is decorative and what you don't think is decorative, decorative is welcome.
All right. Further questions or comments? Debate? All right, seeing none, I think we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote?
Seven zero.
All right. The ordinance passes seven zero. The next ordinance before us is ordinance number 201721T and an ordinance amending the FY 2017/18 budget by appropriating $104,070 from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the match to the restroom replacement and access improvements project at Chena Lakes, Chena Lakes Recreation Area. The sponsor is Mayor Castle. Mr. Williams, can we have a staff report?
We do. From Parks and Recreation, Parks Projects Management is Luke Klein.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening. The ordinance before you tonight will authorize appropriation of $104,070 in local grant matching funds in the general fund fund balance to accompany $1,048,430 in funding from the Federal Highways Administration for restroom replacement and access improvements at Chena Lake Recreation Area. The funding was previously appropriated with ordinance 2014-20-2H. The extended duration of time required to administer the and execute the grant agreements associated with the award of funding, the expenditure of the general funds totaling $104,070 did not occur within the FY 2014/15 budget year. The funding now requires appropriation to continue the project. If authorized, the funding will allow the project to continue on track as planned for our 2018-2019 summer construction season. I urge your approval of this ordinance. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Klein, appreciate that. We're going to begin public hearing on this ordinance. There is no one signed up. Would anyone like to come forward and discuss this ordinance? Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion to adopt by, from Mr. Cooper, Mr. Gray. You seconded the motion. So, we're ready for a semi-debate and questions of staff. Mr. Roberts?
I wanted to ask Mr. Cleworth with the city. I know that there's constant clamor there for more public restrooms in the city. Would you like these old restrooms that were going to be, I think you could put in the Veterans Park or something like that? Probably not.
All right. Any further questions or debate? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
Seven zero.
All right. It passes. All right. Concludes the public hearing. We're going to go back to communications to the assembly. This is item B, referral to the assembly from Deborah LR Brady, Chief Financial Officer, regarding Dennis Rowe's request for waiver of penalty and interest on delinquent property taxes on parcel numbers 0272779, 050527, 0514977, and 0266621. Materials are on page 29. I would note that Mr. Rowe left a message with the clerk's office on Friday, this last Friday, indicating he would not pursue this matter any further. The clerk tried to contact Mr. Rowe to request his, request he provide his withdrawal in writing and was unable to do so. Was unable to reach him. So that's, that's why it's on the agenda. Does any assembly member need to declare conflict or make any disclosures concerning this request? All right. And Ms. McDonald, can we have a report on behalf of the Chief Financial Officer, please?
Mr. Rowe's, his postmark was November 2nd and in his statement, he did say he did went, he went to the post office on November 1st and just put it in the slip in the post office. So based on the postmark, we had him refer to the assembly.
All right. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
All right. Questions for Ms. McDonald. Mr. Roberts?
I'm curious. What do you, what do you do when you get a postmark you can't read?
When we can't read? Most of the time we can read them. We then look at the check date.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Other questions? All right. And I think we can entertain a motion to grant the appeal or not? Is there a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I move to grant the appeal to refund delinquent, actually I'm not sure of the correct wording on this. Is it to refund delinquent property taxes on PANS 0272779, 0508527, 0514977, and 0266621?
All right. And this is in the amount of $89.23?
Correct. And to clarify to the waiver of the penalty and interest.
All right. We have a motion to grant the appeal and waive the penalties and interest. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Mr. Roberts, seconded. Ms. Lajewski, it's your motion.
Sure. To me, this case looks pretty darn similar to the one that came before us. I don't know how we could vote for the first case and vote this one down. And at least I can't go to bed well unless I vote yes for this tonight, given that that's the case.
All right. Mr. Quest?
Thank you. I'd like to echo Mr. Lajewski's statement, but I suppose from the other side since, since, you know, we split on the last one, this seems very, very similar. And in both of these cases, we have somebody who just didn't get it postmarked on time. In, I would say that you, if you voted yes before for somebody who placed brinksmanship with the postmark date deliberately every time, but happened to fail once and then deliberately abuses the borough resources to contest something that's less than $20, this seems to be even more forgivable. So I would, I would say if you're of that mindset, you should definitely vote to grant this appeal. But as our attorney consulted us earlier, there has to be a situation, and I'll greatly paraphrase this, as in it's very out of the normal, that a normal taxpayer doesn't typically occur, encounter when they try to pay their taxes. And neither this situation or the previous one seems to be all that out of the ordinary. So, I mean, I would recommend voting no, but ultimately I recommend voting how you did last time, if you want to be internally consistent.
Mr. Roberts?
So the difference between this waiver and the last one is that the applicant apparently has asked us to be pulled and that seems to be verified by his lack of presence here at his appeal hearing. So I'd say based on the lack of witnesses, which are what is needed, and I have no witness in front of me, that I have no problem voting no on something like this. And I will.
Ms. Major?
So I just will, for me, there's a little bit of a difference between the two in that when you're putting a letter into a mail slot, there is typically a sign that says mail received after a certain time period will be postmarked the following day. And so not having the applicant, or the, not having Mr. Rowe here to clarify that. Whereas in the other situation, the individual had the expectation that, you know, the post office actually did take possession of his mail, but he's just putting it in the slot. So to me, there is a slight difference in the two scenarios.
All right. Mr. Lajewski?
I'd just like to know it because, and let's see, what's the name of the gentleman here in this one? Dennis Rowe, since he dropped his case, I actually have a lot of respect for him because I think he realized that it wasn't worth tying up any more of our resources over $80. So I think that's all the more reason to vote yes, but anyway, that's all.
Mr. Roberts?
So, asking staff, has he paid these, this penalty and interest yet?
Yes, he has.
So we would have to then go through the process of issuing a refund check to him if we approve this waiver?
Or we just leave a credit on his account and it'll be applied to next year's taxes.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Further comment or questions?
So, if I could, I just, I would recommend that you not consider his presence or a lack thereof, other than to the extent that you have a lack of evidence on a certain issue. We didn't get a withdrawal in writing. It was just a phone call and, and he's not here to formally withdraw it. And so my advice is typically to hear it on the evidence that you do have in front of you. So if you're going to make the decision, make it on a lack of evidence versus a lack of presence.
All right. Mr. Cooper?
I was going to say, Ms. McDonald?
And I just want to let you know that now on the due dates, when people are calling, we do tell them to make sure if they're bringing it to the post office, to watch them stamp it with the date. Don't just put it in a blue box. Don't just put it in the slot because we've seen over years, many years, that it doesn't always get postmarked on the date that you think you're dropping it into one of these boxes and/or don't put it in your outgoing mail outside. We let them know that our box, our lobby is open until midnight. They can drive in and put it in our drop box. It's considered current. We do everything we can to just, and we tell them like your federal taxes, watch them stamp it on the due date so there isn't any issues like this.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Cooper?
I was just going to say that I appreciate Mr. Quest's argument, or I concur with Mr. Roberts and Ms. Dolan. I think that it's a lack of the petitioner being here and providing that public testimony about what happened with him, which is what I thought was part of the last, or part of my vote in the last case.
Mr. Quest?
Thank you. On that point, in the appeal, the appeal, the statement that it was placed in a drop box inside a post office that morning, I mean, that sounds like it should be a good faith effort to have it postmarked that same day. That I think that's sufficient evidence. I mean, I think we can trust that person's word, just the way, same way we trusted the last person's word, and it's a good faith effort. It seems to be, to me, to be the exact same standard that was applied previously. I mean, the only, if we are going to continue to compare the two, this seems to be an even more good faith effort because it isn't at least admittedly trying to mail the check at the last possible moment every potential month that they're due. So, I mean, they really seem like apples to apples to me if we're just talking about good faith.
Mr. Lajewski?
I just wanted to comment that for Assemblymember Quest, we are 100% in agreement on our disagreement.
All right. Further debate? Well, I, you know, I'm going to, as I did the first time, I'm going to, I'm going to vote no on this, on this request or this appeal because I don't think it falls within the standard set by code and it has nothing to do with the fact that Mr. Rowe is here. I'm taking, taking what he wrote at face value. All right. Let's vote.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Quest?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Does anyone wish to change their vote?
One six?
One six. All right. The motion fails. No appeal is granted. All right. Moving on to consideration of the calendar unfinished business. Ordinance number 201763 and ordinance amending Chapter 2021.28 of the Fairbanks North Starborough Code to add provisions for elastorstratic, elastrostatic precipitators and gasification heating appliances. The sponsor is Assemblymember Roberts. On page 145, there is a proposed substitute on page 153, and the proposed substitute is an ordinance amending Chapter 21.28 of the code to add provisions for electrostatic precipitators, but the gasification heating appliances are deleted. I would note that on October 12th, 2017, the ordinance was moved and amended, then referred to the Air Quality Control Commission. On January 11th, 2018, the substitute was moved and the ordinance was referred to the February 15th committee of the whole meeting and is now back before us this evening. Proposed substitute is on the floor. It's located, as I said, on page 153. Assembly debate and questions for staff. Mr. Roberts?
So, so we put this off so we could work on a plan. And so that, part of that plan was the resolution that we passed last week to allow a testing program, small to start and a larger one by next year that the administration's going to flesh out. We're also working on another ordinance to give us some flexibility in the future, depending on those test results, to be able to implement this type of technology or similar technology. What I want to point out, for those who maybe heard when the first one was hearing, I want to point out a couple of things. One is that the issue we talked about then that kind of killed it was what we called backsliding, where the EPA would say, hey, you said you'd do this, but now what you're doing is going to actually increase pollution, therefore you're backsliding, and they wouldn't like that and who knows what would happen at that point. But as it turns out, we wouldn't backslide on last year's ordinance because those have yet to be submitted to the EPA. They're being worked into the new SIP for serious attainment that has not been submitted, that's not even been finished by the state of Alaska yet. So, backsliding would have to go all the way back to ordinance 201501 and what was done with that. The second thing is there's process being worked out right now. The EPA, when we went into serious attainment, said we had to look at best available control measures, backhams. And these are control measures that communities under this same onus from the EPA have used to try and fight pollution in their way, to fight PM 2.5. And so there's a whole humongous list of these and the state DEC is going over that list to see which ones would give us the best effect, the most effect, and would be feasible in our economy and our climate. And what I want to point out to the public and to the assembly is that every single one of those backham had to start with some community. Some community had to be first. The EPA didn't, they might have thought up a few of them and gave them to a community, but they didn't just sit and think up all these. These were communities doing something. And so where the state is now looking at everything that any community has done. And I bring up that point because that shows that we can do something with this technology or any other technology and be the first ones, as long as we don't hamstring ourselves with our ordinances so that we'll have backsliding in the future. So we have to be very careful on how we approach the problem so we don't keep ourselves from solutions like this. As most of you know, have lived around it for any time, we had a big emissions problem with car emissions and carbon monoxide, and that was going on for years and years. And we had all these programs and you had to get your car tested and it was just a mess and pretty onerous, especially because I was pretty young then and broke and had really bad cars. But now, we got through that because of technology, because Detroit changed what was in the car. And of course, maybe the EPA had something to do with it, getting requirements pushed through. But the point is, us following all those rules didn't change that situation. The technology changed it. So this technology could be a great thing. We could be the first community and then other communities could use that as the best available control measure. So that is my goal. I don't necessarily see it happen, happening in the rest of my term on the assembly, which ends this year. But we're hoping with an ordinance forthcoming that we'll be able to create some space so that if this test results positively, we'll be able to work those in for people in the future and maybe get closer to solving the problem than a lot of the other solutions that have been presented to us. So for tonight, unless there's a concurrence with the assembly that they'd like to pass this, which I'm okay with, it pretty much, we're going to vote this down. I just want you to know that because we have these other plans and this was postponed till today to actually get the vote accomplished on it. So that's what's going on. Thanks.
All right. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you. I want largely echo what Mr. Roberts said. I, you know, we've all, with the ordinances before us, think it's a great idea and ESPs are a great idea, but it kind of puts the cart before the horse a little bit here. So we've been working with Mr. Roberts and the administration on how we can address this, starting with the resolution and getting this testing plan going and hopefully we'll have something more forthcoming out of that. And in fact, I've got an amendment later on involving ESPs to one of our next resolutions. So it's something that we're, you know, continuing to work for. So voting this ordinance down tonight is, I think, what we have to do now, but it's not an indication that we're stopping work on ESPs and other devices that might help.
All right. Does the administration have anything they wish to say at this point? Yeah, Mr. Williams?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Lawrence. So, you know, to respond to Mr. Roberts' comments, where administration has tickled that we have an idea in the community that might work and we're happy to be the first community and probably the nation to take this on. However, we need to get this thing tested. We need to go through and do it right. We need to test rigorously. It's got to be credible and acceptable by all stakeholders in the process. So if we can get through that, I think we'll be in better shape. And I think the resolution that was passed at the last assembly meeting gets us kind of started on that trail. That's it.
All right. Further comment, debate? Madam Clerk, let's vote.
It's going to carry the-
The substitute will carry the main.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Quest?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
One six?
The ordinance does not pass. All right. The next item on the agenda is, again, citizens' comments regarding items that are not scheduled for public hearing. There are two empty chairs forward. If anybody wishes to, to comment for three minutes, now's the time to do it. Mr. Prox, your name and address?
Mike Prox, 1015 Metaro, North Pole. I was listening to the discussion over the cannabis grow, cannabis cultivation, I think you call it, and listened to a few of the others. And Ms. Robbins made a good point about the odor and there is impact in residential areas and et cetera. But kind of the same thing as the landscaping ordinance. We need to do some work on that ahead of time so that everybody knows the rules. And if there is, if there is objections, they should be based on the rules and not just a debate over this or that for, for a particular grow in this particular neighborhood or that particular neighborhood. I don't have any recommendations for that. I would just as soon put up with the inconvenience of the marijuana grows, et cetera. If I have a problem with that, I'll talk to the folks doing it. But I know other people do. I respect that. And I think to just get things orderly, we need to figure that out. There's probably been enough examples now where there's maybe, I don't know what it is, but there's maybe a need for an ordinance to clarify just what the expectation is so that people know going into the process what the outcome will be and not wait until you spend a lot of time and effort, then go to the assembly and get shot down. That's not a good, good idea. So anyway, that's just a recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Questions? All right. Does anybody else wish to come forward to comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is consideration of the calendar, new business and resolutions. First item is resolution number 201809, a resolution ratifying the monetary terms of the negotiated collective bargaining agreement between the Fairbanks North Starborough Employees Association, Local 6125 of the APA slash AFT, and it's an AFL-CIO affiliate, and the Fairbanks North Starborough, the sponsor is Mayor Castle. The urge memo source on page 231, followed by the resolution. Mr. Williams, may we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Lawrence. I'm waiting on Ms. Stuvak. She's, I'm not sure if she's paying attention back there. Let me grab her there if she happens. I'll tell you, that's completely out of character for her to, she's her, yeah.
I apologize, I was not playing a video game or anything on my phone. Thank you for acting mayor and mayors of the assembly. Before you tonight is a resolution to approve the monetary terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the Fairbanks North Starborough and the Fairbanks North Starborough Employees Association, represented by Alaska Public Employees Association. This is our general government unit group throughout the borough. This group is primarily made up of our represented non-exempt hourly workforce and it also includes approximately 20 exempt professional employees that do not supervise. There are approximately 290 employees in this bargaining unit, which equates to about 69% of the borough's workforce. This contract is for a three-year period to begin on July 1st, 2018, and end on June 30th, 2021. The management bargaining team consisted of Diane Thomas, April Tricky, Debbie Brady, Noah Klein, Jim Williams, and myself. The negotiations started with proposal exchanges in September and concluded in early January. The unit ratified the contract on February 9th of 2018. At last week's work session, we reviewed the monetary terms of this contract and all of the changes are listed on page 236 of your packet. I don't plan to go over them this evening, but would be very happy to answer any questions that you might have about them. On page 239 of the packet shows the financial estimates for the contracts for FY 19, 20, and 21. Estimated costs include step movement, CPI adjustments, leave adjustment for FY 19, mileage increases, and essential employee $1 per hour premium. The estimate was prepared at a CPI of .6, which later came in at a .5, so it's a little bit higher than, than what the actual CPI was. The estimated cost for the contract changes are $105,000 in FY 19, $48,000 for FY 20, The estimated cost for the contract changes are $105,000 in FY19, $48,000 for FY20, and a reduction of $9,000 in FY21, and that includes the significant health plan changes that were made. The funding for the monetary terms will be incorporated in the mayor's FY19 budget, which you'll see in April, and the administration believes this contract is a positive contract that addresses many of the major funding issues facing the borough. We believe the contract is fair, we negotiated in good faith, and we ask the Assembly's support for the monetary terms. The employees in this unit are the backbone of the borough. They work tirelessly every day providing excellent services to the residents. They are the face of the borough and they represent all of us very well. They do a great job, and I appreciate their efforts and want to thank them for their continued service to the borough. And that concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, Mr. Williams, is that complete report, concludes it? All right, as for a motion to adopt this resolution ratifying the monetary terms of the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the Borough Employees Association.
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Mr. Gray to adopt the resolution, a second from Mr. Cooper, assembly debate, and/or questions for staff. Mr. Roberts.
So, while I think the negotiating team did a fine job based on the goals that the Assembly set, and the contract worked out well relative to those goals, as with the prior two bargaining agreements, I'll be voting no because I do believe that we have a problem with conflict of interest that isn't being solved, and so I'll be voting no because of that, but I do appreciate the hard work that the negotiating team put into this and taking our input into consideration. I think they did a good job of that. Thanks.
Mr. Logueski.
I largely echo Mr. Roberts' statement. I'll be voting no to offset one of the, I'm assuming, will be two yes votes from, I believe we've got two members here who've taken political donations from the PAC associated with this particular APEA. If both those members vote no, though, I will consider changing my vote to a yes. That's all I'll say, but it'll be to balance out one of those assumed yes votes, that's all.
So, I've got a question for staff, I've got a couple of questions. I'll start with, I remember unpleasantly learning a lesson here on the Assembly that I need to be very careful about potentially impugning the character of my fellow Assembly folk, and I kind of feel like the implications that are being made here are kind of treading on that, so maybe I would ask the attorney, the clerks, or the presiding officer, anybody who wants to weigh in on that and maybe give some guidance, please?
Ms. Lawrence.
I can win if you want. I guess I'll say this, I think everyone's entitled to their opinion, so you have an ethics rule, and it's a rule that you're required to follow. It's your rule, it's your code, and so people can have the opinion on that, and so I don't think that's necessarily impugning character, but there were some comments made about whether it was appropriate to accept the campaign contributions, and I'll just say this, campaign contributions are a form of protected speech. So, to the extent that it would conflict out a member because they receive a donation to their campaign, it would really violate that constitutionally protected right, and it could also be subject to a lot of manipulation. So, the unions could turn around next year and only donate to Mr. Roberts and Mr. Logueski, for instance, just for the point of conflicting them out, and so it really is, provided those campaign contributions are publicly disclosed, they comply with the state reporting requirements, the APOC rules, they aren't typically in any jurisdiction a basis to conflict a member out. So, I'll say that, I don't know that I think it's impugning anyone's character to give an opinion on what you think of the rule, but as far as potentially making a decision based on that, I just want to make sure you kind of have a little more perspective on it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Quist, follow up?
Thank you for that, and so maybe this is not impugning character, I mean, I just would like to say, I mean, I find it distasteful, and I think it's kind of surprising, given, I mean, we spend a fair amount of time here together, and I feel that everybody that serves on this body has a very high degree of integrity, and so, but back to maybe more the matter at hand, Ms. Stuvak, I made a claim earlier, and maybe you could tell me if I was way off base, or I said that the net monetary effect of this contract to the borough basically beats inflation over the course of the three years, and is that, am I way off base there? My recollection is that we were somewhere in the ballpark of like 1% to 2% each year increase in cost, and when you take into account all the savings considerably from the medical aspect of these changes to the contract, so is that accurate, or would you please correct me?
So, we don't know what inflation will be in the next three years. If it's the same as it has been, then yes, I think that that's probably an accurate statement, but that is still kind of unknown. The wage piece has an increase for the first year of 2.9%, the second year 2.4%, and the third year 2.4%. So, on the wage piece, it's, you know, has been, would be higher than what inflation had been.
So, I mean, if I could clarify?
Sure.
I guess my statement being on like the net monetary cost for the contract, because employees are compensated in ways beyond just their wages, so other aspects of the compensation are being significant, like the cost for that compensation is being significantly decreased, and as a result, that, I don't, I couldn't find the numbers here, but I remember like 1.6 or so was kind of, seemed to be sort of the middle of the road of what the actual...
Right, a lot of the wage increases that are in this contract will be offset by, say, you know, some of the adjustments that we made on the health plan, and the employees are going to be paying more in deductions, et cetera, and so I think that's, you know, I just hesitate to say that that's, will be beating inflation because we don't know what it'll be.
Yeah, I mean, we may end up being deflationary or what have you, so, yeah, sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other? Mr. Logueski.
I agree with that statement from Mr. Quist that this contract is very likely to escalate costs at a rate slower than inflation when it comes to the EPA, and I'd also say I agree that every member in the Assembly, from everything I've seen, has a very high degree of integrity. I only believe that we're all human, though, at the end of the day.
Mr. Cleworth.
Thank you. Some years ago, we at the city did comparisons between the borough and the city, and Pat Cole, and Celine remembers Pat very well, spent a lot of time doing those comparisons, and that's when we found out some of the anomalies between city contracts and the borough, but I just, I'm not speaking in favor or against this, but one of the things I think the general public needs to know, that there are, I think you call them merit increases, we used to call it longevity, and for your non-exempt staff, on top of the CPI that you're doing here, whatever that's going to be based out of Anchorage, that for years one, two, and three, you give an automatic 3% pay increase, and then years four to 20, it's 1.5%. For your exempt staff, it's different for years one to 20, it's an automatic one, well, I shouldn't say automatic, I guess it's called merit, but most everybody gets it, it's 1.9% increase plus your CPI. So, for the general public, you know, when we hear, all we hear is the CPI, but the actual increase is significantly higher than that.
All right. Other comment, debate. In response to the conflict of interest issues raised by Mr. Logueski and Mr. Roberts, you know, I would point out that the other side of that coin is, what they're basically saying is that employee unions should not be allowed to contribute to political campaigns. That's the effect of it. If a candidate shouldn't accept it, basically what you're saying is that unions have no place in contributing to political campaigns. Mr. Logueski.
No, 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 those are your words, they're not mine. Only the three that we contract with shouldn't be donating, if those people want to vote, they should donate as much as they want, but if you want to vote, you shouldn't take their money. There are a lot of other unions who participate in the political process that we do not contract with.
Okay, yeah, no, I acknowledge that. The three unions who have employees here, effectively, what, if it was a conflict of interest to accept contributions from those unions as members or candidates for Assembly, you're basically telling those unions that as unions, they can't, they can't contribute to make political contributions to candidates. All right, other comment. Okay, man and clerk, let's vote.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quist?
Yes.
Mr. Logueski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes. Would anyone like to change their vote?
I'd two.
Resolution passes. Do we need a break, or you want to proceed?
Short break, please.
Take a five-minute break. The record of assembly meeting back to order. We have moved on to the next consideration of the calendar, new business. This is resolution number 2018-10, the resolution identifying Fairbanks North Starborough federal priorities. The sponsor is the Assembly Capital Projects and Legislative Priorities Committee. The resolution is on page 369 of our documents. There is additional information in our yellow folders. Could I have a staff report from the committee chair? Mr. Quist?
Thank you. The Assembly Capital Projects and Legislative Priorities Committee met on the 9th, and one of the agenda items was to discuss potential legislative and capital priorities, and this is at the federal level, and to produce a resolution and send that to the Assembly for consideration. It's fairly brief, so I think the easiest way to discuss it, and especially for the folks listening on the radio, is just for me to read it. So, and then also just a little more background, this resolution, if adopted, would then be sort of the framework that the presiding officer, the borough attorney, and I don't know, maybe others from the borough, would be using to discuss the borough's priorities with our congressional delegation in Washington in about a month's time. Is that, maybe, there's more you'd like after that?
No, that's correct. Ms. Dodge and I travel to the National Association of Counties the first week of March, and then we have meetings set up with the senators and congressmen at the end of those, at that conference.
So, this was largely based on, this is the first time that the committee has taken such a formal step in a resolution like this, but this was based on, largely on a conversation from the year prior. Topics addressed, so air quality, PM 2.5, funding of the air quality program, targeted airshed grant, infrastructure funding for natural gas, cost benefit of point source regulations, on the topic of PILT, fully funding the PILT program for FY2019, F-35s, continue to support necessary funding, marijuana, removal of marijuana from a list of controlled substances, resolve banking obstacles. On a separate topic here, removing the President of the United States' ability to launch a nuclear first strike without congressional authorization, and this specifically cites supporting HR 669, Restricting First Use of Nuclear Weapons Act, support of high-speed broadband internet to Alaskans, support net neutrality, and support reinstatement of state and local tax deductions. We did have some discussion, I won't go into any further detail at the moment, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Mr. Quist, any other members of the, all right, Ms. Major.
So, as the vice chair of the committee, we did have, you know, it was a great meeting to go through this process. There's one area that was a little bit challenging for me that we discussed about, but it was really important that we bring everything discussed to the table so we could have this debate in this public forum, and for one of the issues that I didn't not agree with, that's a double nigger, so I agreed to bring it forward so we could have this debate, and that was removing the President of the United States' ability to launch a nuclear first strike. I just feel like that's probably not the role of the borough necessarily to have that support, so I will be asking later that we amend this and remove that, but I do think it's really important that the entire Assembly have the opportunity to see what was discussed and provide for that input and debate.
All right, any, let's see, there's three members on this committee?
Mr. Gray.
Mr. Gray?
I don't have anything to report, I was unfortunately unable to attend this meeting, so I've been...
All right, well, then that concludes the staff report. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second. We have a motion for Mr. Cooper and a second for Mr. Gray to adopt this resolution number 2018-10, a resolution identifying the borough's federal priorities. Time for assembly debate and questions of staff.
I'd like to make an amendment. I'd like to amend resolution number 2018-10 to remove lines 33 to 35, which include removing the President of the United States' ability to launch a nuclear first strike without congressional authorization, supporting HR 669, Restricting First Use of Nuclear Weapons Act.
Second.
Motion to delete lines 33 through 35, referring to the, removing the President's ability to launch a nuclear first strike without congressional authorization. We have a second from Mr. Logueski. Debate. Mr. Roberts?
So, I would also support this. I think that this bill is being made because of the current president and not because of general policy, and it appears to be just a kind of a character assassination in a bill, and I object to the tenor of the bill, I also don't think it's good policy, and it's unnecessary, and so I do think that it's, and it's something the Assembly really doesn't need to be diving into, this isn't something that affects, directly affects our borough, and I don't think we need to send that type of message. That's a little extreme for our town to be doing. Thanks.
Mr. Quist?
Thank you, I would speak against the amendment. So, I do think that this is an appropriate role for the borough in this regard, I mean, this is the vehicle by which we're choosing to inform our congressional delegation about our federal legislative priorities, and I think that, okay, one of the reasons that it should be a priority is because it's overdue, and I don't think that this is something that is just new, there have been similar bills introduced in many Congresses recently, in the Senate and in the House, and by recent, I mean, in recent history over the last decades, so it's not a new concept. I do think that it does potentially directly affect residents of the borough. Any kind of nuclear exchange is going to impact us, if there was any kind of larger-scale nuclear exchange, it would definitely have a direct impact on citizens and residents of the borough. I think it's also appropriate, if you had an opportunity to listen to Senator Murkowski's remarks to the Alaska State Legislature, she said today that she very much appreciates it when legislative bodies make resolutions, telling them what they would like to see done at the federal level. So, I think once again, that this is very much so an appropriate action and within our scope and within the scope of this committee. So, the bill is very short, and it doesn't have to, you know, if it ended up being a different bill that accomplished the same goal, I think that the intent of the resolution would endorse that, but I'm assuming you've all had an opportunity to look it over. For folks who haven't had a chance to read the bill, HR 669, the logic is fairly simple, a nuclear first strike preemptive, that would be an act of war. War powers are reserved for the Congress, not for the president. Therefore, first strike should only be allowed with congressional authorization. First strike meaning there has not already been, the president hasn't detected a strike on the US, a launch or strike on the US or in ally. So, if that was the case, then it wouldn't be limited. So, the logic is fairly straightforward. Now, I think that this is an important issue anytime, I think that this makes a lot of sense, and I would support this change regardless of who is in office, but I mean, one of the reasons that it is a priority is that it's specifically because of who is in office, and if there's somebody here who can tell me with a straight face that they think that President Donald Trump, this self-described stable genius, should be able to unchecked unleash the American nuclear arsenal, I would be very interested to hear that. So, that's all I have at the moment.
Mr. Logueski?
Sure, I'm going to support the deletion of lines 33 through 35, and the main reason being, and I struggle with this still, I'm trying to come up with a firm line, what's too far, what isn't, in terms of what we comment on as the Assembly, so I think I'm in agreement with Assembly Member Major at this time. When it comes to, I do support the principle behind this bill, though, I would say. And there's one case, I believe, where the Soviets actually detected several inbound ICBMs from the United States, and the world was only saved because a Soviet officer decided to not retaliate, even though he had the ability to do so. You know, we wouldn't be here if he hadn't done that, but at any rate, yeah, I'll support the amendment. I'll stop there.
Other comments? I'm handing the gavel over to Mr. Cooper, because I would like to express my opinion of this provision in the resolution and of this amendment. I was wanting to make sure that this bill got handed out to everybody. It's very short, and frankly, you know, I don't see how anybody can object to this bill. I would remind all of us that when we were sworn in as members of this Assembly, we swore to uphold and protect the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States provides that Congress, not the president, but Congress has war-making powers, has the power to declare war and make war. Now, I acknowledge that over the last 75 years, the commander-in-chief has, through the War Powers Act and just through inaction by Congress at times, has acquired more and more power to initiate military operations without consulting Congress or the American people, and I think in some instances, that's justified. But initiating a nuclear war, starting it, I mean, this is first strike, and I'm not talking about responding to the fact that missiles are coming from North Korea or from wherever else, Russia or China, this, you know, this bill would not, you know, only would prevent the president from initiating a first use of nuclear power, it doesn't in no way inhibit his ability to launch nuclear weapons in response to an attack from another country. And as Mr. Quist said, and I'm agreeing, I'm in agreement, I think this bill should be passed no matter who the president is, but our current president has bragged about how big of a nuclear button he has compared to the North Korean leader. I have real confidence that President Trump fully understands the consequences or the ramifications of a nuclear exchange, and this resolution is dealing with federal priorities, it's identifying this borough's priorities to our congressional delegation, and this bill is before the House now, and if passed, will presumably go to the Senate. And as far as this not being our business, I can't think of anything more vital to the welfare of the people in this community than us not getting into a nuclear war, this country not initiating a nuclear war. And given, you know, given the fact, given our geographic location, we're closer to three countries that, if, you know, at this stage of the game, if we're going to be attacked with nuclear weapons, it's going to come from Russia, North Korea, or China. In all cases, those missiles are coming over us, and so if we were to initiate a nuclear strike, I think Alaska would certainly be one of the targets to respond to it. So, just, you know, just to sum up, you know, it's in the Constitution that this president, that the president does not have the right to initiate or declare war, it is Congress's prerogative to do that, and that's all that this bill says, and it just affirms what I think needs to be affirmed, given some of the statements made by this president. So, I'm certainly going to vote against this amendment, and I would urge my fellow Assembly members to do so as well. All right, other comments? All right, continue on, Mr. Cooper.
I guess I get to keep the gavel. Other comments or discussion? Mr. Quist, did you ever?
If I could just really briefly comment, it's largely a reiteration, because I think this is really pretty simple. It seems it's very within our scope of the Committee and of the resolution, it was this kind of resolution, earlier today was specifically requested by a member of our congressional delegation, it seems to directly, the contents of the amendment being discussed, seem to have a direct impact on the welfare of residents of the borough, and I think that our current place in history, and the fact that this is before the Congress currently, makes this an appropriate priority, and so I would strongly recommend voting against this amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Quist, additional comments or discussion on the amendment?
Seeing none, clerk, let's put on the amendment.
Mr. Logueski?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Quist?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Uh, no.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Anyone like to change the vote?
Seeing none?
Three, four.
It's three, four, and so we're back to the resolution unamended.
All right, Mr. Roberts?
So, I would like to amend to delete line 39, the support of net neutrality.
All right, we have a motion to delete line 39, which states support net neutrality. Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
All right, we have a second. Mr. Roberts has made the motion, Ms. Logueski has seconded it. I would point out that the FCC's decision to stop net neutrality went into effect today. All right, comment, Mr. Roberts?
Okay, I'm actually really amazed that anyone is thinking that this is a good idea. I remember when it first came up years ago, I sent in a letter to the FCC asking them to stop something like this. The last thing we need is more government regulation and government takeover of the kind of freedom of expression that we found and the businesses that have developed around the Internet. And, yeah, I was involved when the Internet came out, I know the government started it, that's great, but it's something that we really need for free enterprise. I want to read some comments here from Reason.com. The current FCC chairman, I'm not going to try to pronounce his name, memorable, memorable, I can't even pronounce that word, memorably told reason that net neutrality rules were a solution that won't work to a problem that doesn't exist. Yet in 2015, despite a blessed lack of throttling of specific traffic streams blocking websites and other feared behavior by ISPs and mobile carriers, the FCC issued net neutrality rules that gave the federal government the right to punish business practices under Title II regulations designed for the old state-enabled Bell telephone monopoly. And then later on, it talks about, in an interview with him, that one of the major impacts of the net neutrality rigs was a historic decline in investment in Internet infrastructure, which would ultimately make things worse for all users. Why bother building out more capacity if there's a strong likelihood that the government will effectively nationalize your pipes? So, what we have here is we have more than the regulation, which doesn't make things better, it makes things worse, and you're going to end up, just as government regulation is done, for example, to, the airline industry is a good example, where you've lost, you're always losing smaller carriers, and you're ending up with a conglomeration of just a few large carriers, because the government regulation is so intense, the costs are so big, that only big carriers can spread that cost out over their operations, so it keeps the smaller guys from being able to get into those markets. That's the way government regulation works, is there's always a cost, regulation always brings a cost to it. What you're going to do here is you're going to hurt the industry, you're going to hurt the choice the consumer has through the free market, and with all the different options that could be, and you're going to get what the government decides to give you, and how they decide to regulate it. I think that's inappropriate, net neutrality is not a good idea, we need the free enterprise to run the Internet so that it will prosper, and so that it will have the type of freedom of speech enabling that has come about because of it, it's been a very positive thing in our country, and I want to see that to keep going, and I want to see the business growth that comes with it to keep going, so I'd ask you to remove this thing and not support net neutrality, and the socialism that that brings with it. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Quist?
I would speak against the amendment, and I just briefly just try to explain what net neutrality is. It's the idea that the Internet should be open and free, and I don't mean free in cost, I mean free as in speech, and that specific kinds of content, whether or not kinds of content, but the contents of content can't be regulated in different ways by, limited in different ways by Internet service providers. So, an Internet service provider might be more certain, sure, video needs this kind of bandwidth, text needs this kind of bandwidth, that's fine, but they can't then say, video from YouTube gets X bandwidth, but video from Netflix gets different bandwidth, or even specifically limiting it to the type of content. And the idea is, you're pointing out the analogy to the Bell companies, if you had your telephone company, and they had like a package where they charged you more if you called anybody in particular, like not just like you're making a call or making a call to a specific area, but that could charge you more if you're calling your mother, as opposed to if you're calling your brother, okay? And to respond to the comment that this isn't a problem, this might not be a terrible problem right now, and I do think it's problematic, it has potential to be a massive problem. The majority of Americans don't have a large choice, or even a choice at all as to broadband providers. Most people live in markets with only one choice. Now, if there's only one choice, and that private business is allowed to charge whatever they want on different types of content, then you definitely are setting yourself up for limitations on free speech, limitations or barriers of smaller guys, as was mentioned earlier, from actually being able to get into the market and compete, because there's already these large entities out there. If you wanted to start your own video streaming service, but there was no net neutrality to protect you, depending on what market you're in, that ISP could very well just price you out before you even start, because they've got to deal with another company that does video, maybe their own. So, it's actually something that if implemented, fosters more free speech and fosters more entrepreneurial opportunity. So, yeah, I would speak against the amendment. So yeah, I would speak against the amendment. Thank you.
Further comment? Mr. Lajewski.
I'll just say admittedly, I don't know enough about the details of net neutrality, quite frankly, to make an educated decision on this. That may be the same for others, even if you're not willing to admit it. Well, I'll support it for now, but it sounds like I have some research to do, especially if this comes back up before us.
Further comments? If you don't mind, I just would just try to briefly explain a little bit more what it is. It's, so right now, if you go, you get the Internet from your Internet service provider, company A or company B, and you want to go to Google, or you want to go to Facebook, or you want to go to your friend's blog, all three of those things cost you the same amount, but maybe there's more data coming from one, and you're paying by data, so it costs more. But it's up until today, actually, it was against the regulations, and order for the company to say, if you want to go to the news miner dot com, we're going to charge you $10 more a month. But if you go to our private, like our Internet company's news site instead, you know, we'll charge you more. So instead, it's going to, you know, people aren't going to want to pay that premium, and instead they're going to go to this other site, so they can, so an ISP that has a monopoly on a market, which is very common, could potentially shape the content of speech, and very powerfully. And these regulations prevent that. And if these regulations do stay off the books, I imagine that in a few years' time, you'll start to see Internet packages that more strongly resemble cable packages, where they'll be the social media package. If you want to go to Facebook, we're going to charge you a premium just to go to Facebook. Or, you know, what have you, the gloves are off if you repeal net neutrality, and it really allows these large telecoms to do whatever they want. Thank you.
All right, further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'll just make one point. Allows them to do what they want, that the customer then chooses whether they want that and whether they want to pay for it. As long as you have healthy competition, you will have a variety of packages, and the guys who don't put out the package you want will go the way of the buffalo. What we've seen is that by allowing this unfettered competition out there in the tech industry, we've seen incredible changes. I mean, the fact that I can just dial long distance, and I don't even think about it anymore, when I was a kid, that just did not happen. You just didn't go dial in long distance like that. And those kind of changes are because we deregulated the telephone industry and opened it up for that kind of technology. And so the last thing we need to do is put the brakes on with more regulation.
Mr. Gray.
I think Mr. Quest touched on this a little bit, but I feel like it's not just about cost. It's if you have these giant corporations basically limiting what content maybe you can see or not see, they could be steering you in a direction that's more favorable to them, limiting what you might even see on the Internet, because it might not be worth it to you to pay extra to go see something else, or it might be something politically favorable to them only. So if you really want to homogenize the Internet, I think that repealing net neutrality is the way to go. That's all I'll say. Thanks.
Mr. Quest.
I just had to reiterate one thing, because I feel like it must have been lost based on Mr. Roberts' last statement. There is not a variety of choices, I mean, there just isn't. I mean, even in our market, the choices aren't great. In most markets, there isn't a choice, so there is not robust competition. It just, and that's why this is even more important.
All right, any further debate? All right, on this amendment to delete line 39, which supports net neutrality, let's vote.
Mr. Quest?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
One, six.
All right, the amendment fails. We're still on the resolution as it was presented. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, I'd like to move an amendment that is included in your yellow folders. I'd like to move to amend, add at line 22, under the air quality of PM 2.5, the following bullet point. Encourage the Environmental Protection Agency to test electrostatic precipitators and other new technologies that may help improve air quality and certify such devices if appropriate.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to amend the resolution by adding to, to where now is a blank, line 22, under air quality and PM 2.5. Encourage the Environmental Protection Agency to test electrostatic precipitators and other new technologies that may help improve air quality and certify such devices if appropriate. That motion is from Mr. Cooper, it's seconded by Mr. Roberts. Mr. Cooper.
I'd like to speak briefly to it, as I alluded to earlier in the meeting, this, I saw the opportunity, based on some of the other work we're doing with electrostatic precipitators, to add this as a legislative priority. Ms. Dodge, who is not here, and I discussed this, and she says that she virtually cosponsors this, so this came out of some discussions between Ms. Dodge, Ms. Major, and myself, and pretty straightforward. It's a, if we're asking the federal agencies to do something, this is a good way to do it.
All right, Mr. Gray.
I just want to ask the sponsor, is there any value to you in clarifying residential electrostatic precipitators? Because EPA has done a lot of industrial wet and dry research on electrostatic precipitators, so if we're only talking about, I don't know if we want to pigeonhole it by saying, not saying, you know, if we said residential, if that would limit attention, or?
I was going to ask maybe Ms. Dolan if she felt that it was necessary that we were that specific in this resolution. I don't think you have to be, I mean, in discussions while we're there, I think clearly the focus of the borough is for residential kind of solid fuel burning appliances use, and so we'll focus on that in the discussion.
All right, great, thanks, I'm good with it then.
All right, further debate? Seeing none, let's vote.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
Seven, zero.
All right, the amendment passes. All right, further debate on the resolution as amended. Mr. Lajewski.
I have a motion to delete the wordings on line 33 through 34, and replace them with support Congress's sole authority to declare war and authorize the commander in chief to prosecute war.
Second.
Now, that's, I mean, well, I guess it's same language, but is it, could you repeat the motion?
Support Congress's sole authority to declare war and authorize the commander in chief to prosecute war.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to amend 33 through 35.
Oh, no, just 35 stays.
33 and 34. It was 34, 33, and 34. Okay, it was seconded by Ms. Major. Would you like to address your motion?
Sure, although I agree, well, since we're going to have this, I want to approve it, okay? Since it's part of the package. I agree with the bill, but I disagree with the reasons, that my perceived reasons of why it's being brought forth. I think it's being brought forth as a partisan move to criticize President Trump. To me, this issue should not be caught up in partisanship, it's just a question of, and I'm talking, of course, to the greater issue, is should the president be able to prosecute a war when it's not declared? For me, the answer is no. For the Constitution, the answer is no. So I would, I prefer this language to the more narrow language that seems much more partisan and much more critical of our existing president.
All right, Ms. Major.
So I agree with what Mr. Lajewski said, I've struggled, but I think this, you know, piece of it is less jurisdictional, less within our jurisdiction as the others, which sort of directly impact what we're trying to achieve within the borough. But I do think that the change in language, certainly, yeah, the change in language, I think, especially when you talk about our congressional delegation at the federal level, to me, it seems more acceptable.
All right, Mr. Quest.
Thank you, I think this amendment's curious, I'm not entirely opposed to it, because it takes the most important part, which is specifically supporting this bill. And I guess I'm, so I'm not super excited about the amendment, but I guess the thing I find most interesting is, is that I clearly made some statements about why I thought this was appropriate, none of which have anything to do with partisan politics, and I made statements actually quite to the contrary. But, Mr. Lajewski, I mean, I guess I maybe, I would like some clarity at some point about the whole imputing the character of other Assembly members. I mean, if I interpret what he just said correctly, I feel like I'm being told that I'm lying, and that I, because I was the one, on the committee, I was the one that recommended this, we discussed it, we brought it forward, and I mean, I can tell you very clearly that I brought this forward not as a partisan exercise in any way whatsoever. I think it's appropriate, I think it's appropriate regardless of who is president, and then I think that we have, if I could speak directly to you, Mr. Lajewski, I think that we have an intellectual agreement on that issue there, that it seems, you know, that the president shouldn't have these war powers, and clearly he does. And, but, I do think that it's timely, given specifically who is president. You know, I would support this a couple of years ago, I would support this anytime, I mean, this makes so much sense. But given who is currently in office, regardless of his political party, I mean, he has made some very alarming statements, and I don't think, as Mr. Lawrence says, I don't think that he appreciates the full scope of those potential consequences. So I think that the language as it is initially is very specific and clear, that we would like to remove the President of the United States' ability to launch a nuclear first strike without congressional authorization. I don't believe in the point anymore, because I think if it gets removed, but we still keep line 35, the effect is pretty much the same. But it really seems kind of excessive to me to remove this and dance around behind the larger, more vague concept. So that's all I have at the moment, thank you.
Before I call on Ms. Major, Ms. Lajewski, would you repeat your amendment, your motion?
Support Congress's sole authority to declare war and authorize the commander in chief to prosecute war.
Right, Ms. Major.
So I just want to recap, going back to the meeting where this was introduced. So, yes, Mr. Quest is the chair, brought this forward, there really actually wasn't a lot of discussion about it. So Ms. Dodge, as the presiding officer, actually did at that point say, you know, she questioned whether or not it was within our jurisdiction at the meeting, but she thought that it was, she also felt that it was something that needed to be brought forward to the full Assembly to have this discussion. And I'm not sure, I know that was an open meeting, so I'm sure the minutes were probably available somewhere, I think it was recorded, it was recorded, and so people could go back and actually see what that discussion is, but I just wanted to clarify that point.
Well, you know, I will repeat, these are federal priorities, we're making this under federal power, it's clearly within the jurisdiction of this resolution. Mr. Roberts.
So I would say that I disagree with Mr. Quest, that what he said was absolutely partisan, when he's impugning the motivations and the reputation of the President of the United States, who's in a particular party and has been implementing policies that align with what that party stands for. And in fact, I'd like to point out, a president who's done more for Alaska than any president's done for us in a long time in opening up our resource development, I think it's definitely partisan, and I really don't think that he should be impugning his reputation or his motivation or anything else. And so even though I certainly am not going to be voting for this resolution in the shape it's in, being kind of a socialist manifesto, I will vote for this amendment.
All right, question, Mr. Quest.
I just, I'm just kind of confused, you said that I was impugning the reputation of the president?
Yes.
That's what I said.
All right, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, you know, I was not terribly troubled, or I'm not terribly troubled by the language as is, however, I do appreciate the amendments, I think it's actually more consistent with the bill, which, the premise of which is that the president doesn't have that authority to begin with, and it's phrased in terms of a prohibition instead of removing power that the sponsors of the bill don't think that the president has. So, you know, I will support the amendment, so I thank Mr. Lajewski for...
All right, further debate, Mr. Quest.
One last bite, if I could. Mr. Cooper makes a great point, and I think that makes sense. I do appreciate that this amendment does not remove the reference to the specific bill, I think that's really the important part of this. And I would just like to reply to Mr. Roberts, and you can, you know, have to take me at my word, which apparently isn't good enough for you, this is not a partisan exercise, and I personally don't care what party you're in, or it has nothing to do with it, okay? This is not a partisan exercise. Thank you.
Further debate on this amendment. All right, seeing none, madam clerk, let's vote.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Anyone like to change their vote?
I'd two.
The amendment passes. Further debate regarding this resolution as amended. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I'd like to delete lines 29 through 31, dealing with the subway's support of marijuana.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Roberts to delete lines 29 through 31. Mr. Lajewski, was that your second? Mr. Lajewski seconded it. On Mr. Roberts?
So I'd like to point out the reason that marijuana, the large reason why it's on the list of controlled substances, is because they actually have quite a hard time in the industry being able to come up with standardized dosages. I mean, they have a hard time coming up with grows where they can predict the amount of THC even within the same grow. That's why the methods they use are designed as best as they can to get to a consistent grow, but they actually have a hard time with that, and they have a very hard time making the dosages standard. And so that's why it's still on that list of substances, that's the main reason. And, but also, I don't think the Assembly needs to be supporting something that's done so much damage out there in the community and in the US in general. It's the number one program for mind-altering drugs for people in drug rehabilitation programs, and it's just not where we need to be going. We should be coming up with things that will build the community and not tear it down. Thank you.
Further debate?
Quest? Thank you, I would speak against this amendment, and to reply specifically to a couple of the comments that Mr. Roberts made. That last one about the fact that more people are in rehab for this than other drugs, is specifically because it's illegal, not because it's dangerous. So since it's illegal, the rehab is court-ordered. By most objective measures that I'm aware of, marijuana is a safer drug than other drugs that's very popular, that's not on the schedule at all, alcohol. It took a constitutional amendment to give the federal government the ability to prohibit alcohol. I'm strongly of the opinion that it should also take a constitutional amendment for the federal government to prohibit marijuana. I think that this does not belong on the schedule. If we were to consider any kind of amendment to this, and I'd still be opposed to this, but a potential amendment to this amendment, instead of removing it from the list of controlled substances, we could at least remove it from Schedule I. Schedule I states that the drug has no medical value or potential medical application. And clearly, that's not the case, especially given that the majority of the states, including this one, have medical marijuana programs. Although I think that could be a compromise, I don't believe that this substance belongs on the list of controlled substances, I think it's very relevant to residents of the borough. And, and one other point I'll just mention, just, I think this is kind of procedurally, or just gives them the history of these lines of the resolution, there's two points here, there's the removal of marijuana from the list of controlled substances, and then separately there's this resolve banking obstacles. And those are kind of separate ideas, because the removal of marijuana from the list of controlled substances would essentially resolve all of these banking obstacles. So I would include both of those, thinking that if this body decided to remove the line of removal of marijuana from the list of controlled substances, we would at least be able to send the message to our delegation that we'd like to have some kind of workaround so that the industry has the ability to engage with the banking sector as all other legal and regulated industries do. So if we were to massage this at all, and I would say, like, maybe get rid of one, but keep the other, all that being said, I would speak against the amendment to remove all of this entirely, I think it's completely appropriate for us to send this message to our delegation. Thank you.
Mr. Gray.
Well, I would just like to point out that the Congressional Cannabis Caucus, of which Don Young, our state congressman, is one of the four members, two Democrats, two Republicans, is working to do exactly these things at the federal level, so just want to point that out.
All right, further debate on this amendment. All right, the amendment is to delete lines 29 through 31, deleting all references to marijuana and removing it from the list of controlled substances, our resolving bank obstacles. All right, if we're done with the debate, let's have a vote.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Quest?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
One, six.
All right, the amendment fails. Further debate on this resolution as amended. Mr. Cooper.
I just want to make two statements. Ms. Dodge is currently in Juneau, Ms. Major was just there, and while there, was hearing updates from Senator Murkowski and Congressman Young, and from those updates took away that Congressman Young in particular is interested in borough transportation projects, and Senator Murkowski is interested in infrastructure projects, and didn't feel like tonight was the night to try to add those to a legislative priority list, but I put that out there for the administration, and I understand that the administration already may be discussing some of those projects with the congressional delegation, but there is an opportunity that Ms. Dodge identified to perhaps talk to the congressional delegation about some specific infrastructure and transportation projects.
All right, further debate regarding the resolution before us, as it has been amended. Mr. Lajewski.
I just want to let Mr. Quest know my comments towards partisanship, I really had in mind, as I was saying those things, members within the US Congress who may be authoring that particular bill, and it was not intended to be directed at you.
All right, any further debate? All right, on the resolution as amended, oh, Mr. Quest.
So I just wanted to introduce a kind of a topic for discussion, I guess I could make a motion, but I just, since the Committee met, and since this resolution's been drafted, there's been a, another mass shooting at a school, we're all very well of what happened in Florida, and I was just offering the subject at the moment for the body to discuss if we thought that including any kind of comment or starting point for a discussion with our congressional delegation would be something that we might be interested in. I could, if you like, try to offer an amendment right now, or we could discuss it however you like.
Okay. It's, Quest, if you wish to offer an amendment.
I'd like to move to amend the resolution. And I guess we can add this at the end on line 42 to read, "Support meaningful reform of firearms regulation such to improve the safety of citizens in general." You know, I'd just like to start with something vague that we can all hopefully agree with. And if I could continue, if I got a second?
All right. Just to be clear, your motion is to add to the, another bullet point on these priorities, "Support meaningful reform of firearm regulations to improve the safety of the public?"
Yes.
Is there a second?
Wow, okay.
I'll second it for the sake of discussion.
All right. We have a second. Mr. Quest?
Thank you. I think I just expand a little bit. You know, I'm not trying to do anything wild here. All I'm trying to say is I think that, and I think I speak for a majority of the people in the borough, that this is a significant issue and that it should be discussed, and that we're at a place and time where something really needs to start happening. And I'm not saying what that is, but all I'm saying is that it needs to be meaningful and have real world effect. And this doesn't sound like a controversial move to me in any way, but apparently like I'm struggling to get a second on it, and we're not even trying to discuss it, which is, I'm having a pretty hard time with. So, I'm not trying to rock the boat too hard, but I think we need to start talking, and I don't think that that is too much to ask.
All right. Ms. Major.
I don't support the amendment as proposed. However, I do believe, especially after listening to Senator Murkowski's speech earlier today, I do believe that it's appropriate that we come out in support of school safety. And I think keeping the discussion on supporting school safety to prevent mass killings, I don't, that's not a word that I would like to use, but to prevent, you know, just to protect our children while they're at school is important. I don't think that we necessarily need to call out guns in general.
Mr. Cooper. Thanks. Yeah, I know, I appreciate the tent behind the amendment. I guess it's one of those things where it's such a topic that to have a meaningful discussion on it, it would have been good to have something, you know, an amendment that was thought out and distributed ahead of time, because I always feel like talking about heavy issues like this at this hour, when we haven't had a good chance to really talk about them, doesn't always lead to the best results. So, you know, I'm listening to what other folks have to say. I just, if we're going to talk about this issue, I think I'd like it to be in a forum where we can talk about it with a little more thought.
Mr. Roberts.
So, I'm amazed that someone who just minutes ago was defending the Constitution and how great it was, is now directly jousting against it. And so, I'd like to make an amendment in the spirit of that motion to change the language to say that we would like the federal government to incentivize arming teachers in public schools for the safety of the students.
Second.
A motion to modify or amend the proposed amendment to state that, to support incentivization of teachers adding guns in schools to protect the students. Second, as for Mr. Roberts, a second for Ms. Lajewski. Debate, Mr. Roberts.
I speak to that. Okay. So, one of the most, every time something like this happens, one of the most incredible things that comes out is how somehow the gun caused the incident. Of course, more people die from knives every year from guns, but somehow the gun was the cause. This object was the cause and not the person who was using it. And so, we're not looking at that. We're just looking at if we can just remove this cause, somehow that will just change the world and clean it up. But that's not reality. That's not how it works. What is found to work well is being able to defend yourself lowers that kind of violent crime rate and actually other non-violent crime rates quite a bit. And so, if we're going to have a real solution, let's have something that if someone knows that they enter a school, that they're going to be facing some real opposition. And the most dangerous thing that's been done to schools is making them gun-free zones so that the good guys aren't armed. That's what a free society needs, is armed, good guys willing to defend those who need defending. Thanks.
Further debate. Mr. Quest.
Thank you. So, I'm on the, we're amending the amendment to the amendment. So, I'd just like to point out for the listening audience who might not be able to observe this, appears that Mr. Roberts finds this amendment to the amendment to be quite comical, because he has quite the grin and was chuckling when he made it, which I find, I have just incredibly poor taste given the subject matter. Ms. Major mentioned, and we've been talking about schools, obviously it's coming from the recent news of schools. This is not just schools. These killings happen everywhere. So, I think we need to have a larger view. I appreciate Mr. Cooper's comment about the lateness of the hour, and if we want to have like a real meaningful discussion, we shouldn't just throw something together. Well, you know, all I'm trying to do with this motion here is, and if I could, I guess I'm on the unamended amendments, I guess I'll stop and address that later. I would just, on the motion to amend, in modern political dialogue that I've been able to witness, I have not heard anything as profoundly stupid as the idea of throwing more guns at a gun problem and arming school teachers. That's all I have to say.
Further comment on this, on the amendment to the amendment? Amendment being, to the amendment being to support incentivizing teachers to carry guns or to have guns at school to protect students?
Yep.
Ms. Lajewski.
I suppose I support the concept that when you're at work, you should be able to defend yourself, and if you're an adult overseeing children, you should be able to defend them too. I don't know that doing it through a federal, a resolution to our federal representatives is the right way to do it. So, I guess I support the concept, but I'll vote against it, and then I'll, I guess I'll talk to the right amendment next once we vote.
All right. So, we have an amendment to the amendment. Any further debate? Mr. Dorn.
Okay. Jim Dorn. Not a problem. I'm speaking as an individual, because I can't, our board has not discussed this, but I just want to make an information piece that all the major education associations have a position against arming teachers. And I would just point out as an educator myself, but in people who are actually working on the front line with kids, that that is not the solution. And I would just otherwise say that it's not just a school issue. And so, as you move forward in discussion with some consideration, I just keep those points in mind.
All right. Further debate. All right. On the amendment to the amendment, let's vote.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mr. Quest?
No.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Would anyone like to change their vote?
One six.
All right. The amendment to the amendment fails. That leaves us with the amendment, "Support meaningful reform of firearms regulation to improve the safety of the public." Mr. Roberts.
So, to the public, Mr. Chris was right. I was amused because in my mind, there's no more ridiculous a concept than thinking that regulated guns would stop all these tragedies. To think that that's the solution, when time and time again, we've been shown differently, when all the stats are the other direction, shows a real intractability of thought that people have on this issue. And so, to me, it is amusing that it keeps coming up, even though it's such a profoundly bad idea, has been disproven many times, and it just won't die, because really it's an agenda item. And I won't get into all the reasons why it's important to have the freedom and the right to bear arms, because that's a much longer discussion, and this is already going on too long. But I certainly oppose this amendment and the very concept behind it that shows that we're not really thinking through the solution. If we were to pass this, we're just showing that we just had a really bad idea and we're going to put it forward, because firearms regulations do not solve this kind of problem. This is a people problem. That shooter was a problem child. He had a problem, and it wasn't because of our gun laws. That didn't create the problem. Thank you.
Right. I've had the gavel again.
I handed the gavel off to Mr. Cooper, because I'd like to respond or make, you know, express my opinion regarding this. You know, I disagree with Mr. Roberts regarding their, you know, that there's no evidence or record of gun regulation, improving or reducing the amount of killings by, you know, by guns. With regards to the former student in Florida, he was able to kill 17 people with an assault weapon, assault rifle, that was, you know, semi-automatic. And if he went into that school with a knife, there's no way he would have killed 17 people. In Australia, and I can't remember the year, but this is a fact that was, you know, was discussed in the White House a couple days ago, or maybe yesterday, by one of the students in that Parkland School, that in Australia, there was a mass killing in the late 90s. I think something like 20 to 30 people were killed. And the response from the Australian government was to prohibit people from being able to purchase many sorts of guns, especially automatic and semi-automatic weapons. And since that legislation passed in Australia, which, you know, a lot of, you know, a lot of people there who have a lot of independence and, you know, live off the land, there has not been one mass killing since then. And we're talking about almost 20 years. And I know Australia doesn't have the same population as the United States, but I think it's clear that legislation can make a difference in reducing the number of mass killings. And certainly, you've got, you've got a lot more gun regulation in Europe, and there's very few of these mass killings in Europe. And been any in Australia in the last 20 years. So, that's just my comment regarding that.
Traditional comment debate, Mr. Quest, then Ms. Major, then Ms. Lajewski.
Thank you. So, I think that the amendment as proposed potentially encapsulates Mr. Roberts' proposed amendment that failed, in that all we're asking for, or all I'm saying that we should be asking for, is meaningful firearms regulation such that it would improve public safety. Now, Mr. Roberts might say meaningful firearms regulation, that would improve public safety, would be issuing, incentivizing, mandating, what have you, firearms to teachers. That would be a meaningful firearms regulation that he thinks would improve public safety. All I'm saying is we need to talk about it. And I don't see this amendment passing. It seems important enough that I may very well try to bring it back into a resolution at some later date. But all I'm saying is, I think that it should be a priority. It should be on the list. It's relevant. It's timely, and it should be addressed. And that was why I wanted it to be kind of vague. And just one last point I'll make. So, if somebody were to say to you, "Toasters don't toast toast. People toast toast." You might think, well, okay, that makes sense. A person has to toast the toast. But you know what? Toasters make toasting toast really easy. If it wasn't for toasters, and I wanted to have a piece of toast, I'd have to get some kind of like wrought iron handle and put the toast in it, and put it near a fire, or get my oven, or something else, right? But the toaster makes it really, really convenient to toast toast. So, more toast gets toasted. Now, I don't think I need to extend the analogy. I'm sure you all get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quest, Ms. Major.
So, I'm not going to vote in favor of this amendment. I am 100% in favor of school safety. And in fact, when Senator Murkowski talked today, we talked about, she, part of what she talked about was things like infrastructure improvements. Other, there are so many different tools available, and I don't know that limiting, just, you know, limiting it, one tool is necessarily helpful when the broader discussion really needs to be on how do we keep our children safe when they're at school.
Ms. Lajewski.
So, I don't want to diminish the seriousness of the topic, but I do want to put it in perspective. And I'm just, I quickly Googled for these statistics, and they seem to be about right from what I know what they should be, but I'm finding that about 37,000 people die a year in road crashes. I think it's actually more for firearm deaths, but they're primarily handguns, not assault rifles, although the school shootings seem to be more of a semi-automatic large caliber rifles. But at any rate, according to these statistics here, over 1,600 children under 15 years of age die each year in automobile accidents, and another 8,000 are killed for 16 to 20 year olds, young drivers. And I mean, I'm just trying to put it into perspective. So, and I'm making a comment that why aren't we talking about, and I know I am, you know, the car crashes? I think it's because when one dies at a time or two people die at a time, it's not a media-worthy event, but when 17 people are suddenly and violently taken from us, all of a sudden it's front page of the media. And so, again, just trying to put this into perspective.
Mr. Roberts.
So, I agree with Mr. Quest. It does make things easier. What it makes easier is to defend yourself. When they came out, they were ever, they called it the great equalizer, because it allowed somebody who maybe didn't have the build or the skills to be able to defend themselves appropriately against someone of a larger build or more skills. One of the largest demographics of people who buy guns for defense are women who don't want to be put in that situation against a larger man and want to make sure that they can defend themselves. That's what guns are good for. They do it well, and that's by design, and I'm glad they do it well, because they are one of the best forms of defense, and we should be encouraging that and not discouraging it. Thanks.
Additional assembly debate, comments? Mr. Quest.
Just one last thing. So, the way I look at this, I mean, if we don't include this in the resolution, like if you vote against this amendment, the message I'm hearing is we don't even want to talk about this. This is not a priority. Dealing with gun deaths is not a priority. So, that's what I'm hearing, if you're going to vote no. And I mean, if you're all planning on voting no, and that's not the statement you're trying to make, I mean, I'd appreciate you explaining to whoever might choose to address this, what your rationale is, because it seems to me that that's really the, unless you're a procedural concern, which I think that I tried to address, but what is the rationale in voting no if it's not to say, "We don't want to talk about this issue"? Thank you.
Comments or debate? Seeing none on the amendment, clerk, let's vote.
I just thought someone else would jump in.
Mr. Roberts.
Just to answer his question, what we do here is speaking for the community, and I don't think we have the right to put this amendment forward in our community.
Okay. Additional comments or debate on the amendment?
If you'll allow me, I'm just going to, I'd like to clarify.
All right. Mr. Quest.
The amendment, the proposed amendment, all it says is that we would like meaningful something. It doesn't specify the something. It doesn't, your, in my opinion, completely out-there other amendment does not conflict in any literal way with my proposed amendment here, okay? And I, you know, this is not a controversial subject. If you think about, does something need to be done? The answer is yes. Everybody thinks something should be done. You have a different idea of what that something is. This amendment doesn't specify that. All it asks for is meaningful change in the face of a problem. It doesn't specify, and we just, you know, and I'll leave it there.
Additional debate or discussion on the amendment? Seeing none? Clerk, let's vote on the amendment.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Ms. Major?
No.
Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
No.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Anyone like to change their vote? Seeing none?
Three, four.
Fails three, four. And we're back to the resolution as amended, but not by this time.
Any further debate on the resolution? All right. On the resolution as amended, let's vote.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Quest?
Yes.
Mr. Lajewski?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Anyone like to change their vote?
Six, one.
All right. The resolution passes. Next item on the agenda is messages from the borough mayor. Mr. Williams?
Well, Mayor Castle is in Juneau right now. He'll be heading back Saturday, back to town here, so I'll cover some messages for you. I've got a few things to pass along. First off, the budget. We're wrapping up with the major decisions and kind of finalizing what's going to come out of the mayor's office. We're getting the document assembled up. We'll be getting that assembled up here pretty soon and take on the final tweaks that we need to put into the budget, and then I should release that to the Assembly on April 5th. I should see that on April 5th. Not such good news coming here, so I'll just give you the bottom line upfront, and I'll explain it to you, so bear with me. So, we're going to be going to our summer hours of operation at the Noel Wayne Library starting the week of March 19th. And so, those hours will be Monday through Wednesday, 10 to 9:00, Thursday through Friday, 10 to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 10 to 5:00, and closed on Sundays. So, here's what's going on. Let me tell you what we did. I'll tell you why the change. So, we consulted, we've been batting this around internally in the administration. We consulted with the library commission yesterday, finally bounced the idea by them. And after discussion and analysis, a decision was made that move into a summer schedule right after spring break, we'd be the best short-term course of action for the problem that we're dealing with. And our primary focus, as always, is to ensure that when the library is open, we're able to provide quality service. So, why are we changing? Well, as you know, last, this time last year during the budget season, the library staff lost the capability to use casual part-time labor due to changes in the labor rules. We made an attempt to repurpose that labor with some full-time pages. I'll tell you that the library books and shelving and all this stuff on the shelf have never looked better, and it doesn't happen any faster than it can happen right now. The problem was, the casual labor was used to fill other short-term needs in the library, such as higher-level management functions, and we were using that to fill that four-hour gap on Sundays, adding some increasingly negative patron behavior, which is deluding management staff from their primary duties. And what I got is a library staff that's extremely frustrated and trying to find a way to work around this problem. So, their view is that the situation is pretty much untenable. So, the plan is to move to the summer schedule, close on Sundays, and reduce hours on Thursday evenings, and then consult with the Assembly during the budget sessions coming up in April and see if we can find a way through the budgeting process to maybe bake that back into the process. It would be pretty much, from the timing perspective, from the time we got an ordinance prepared, put in front of the Assembly, we'd pretty much be in the same zone of timing to do any serious work on it. So, the recommendation is just to wait till we get to the budget season, budget work sessions and work it out, hopefully there. Any questions on that situation before we move on to the other announcements?
The implementation of the summer schedule, is that happening immediately?
It's happening on March 19th, the week of March, March 19th. So, we would normally do that right around Memorial Weekend, so we're just done about eight weeks early. So, one more thing here. So, I got to correct something that's happening, and the mayor and I made a mistake. It's not a big mistake, but we need to nip it in the bud right now. So, we've got many questions about the tax cap and revenues, new fees, those kinds of things, and how that's applied to the cap. And we've been under the understanding, after looking hundreds of spreadsheets and lines of data, that yeah, if you put the, if you increase any revenues, it's not going to affect the tax cap. It's going to be revenue under the cap and offset property taxes. That's not correct. I got corrected by my chief financial officer yesterday afternoon, and she ran, showed me the numbers and the calculations. And if, basically, the bottom line is if we do pull in new revenues because we raise fees or whatever, those new revenues would be above the cap, so it wouldn't affect the tax cap. So, if folks are feeling frustrated with that, we apologize. We're going to do the best we can to correct that, and we'll do the best to make it right.
Excuse me. Could you clarify that you're saying that user fees are not affected by the tax cap?
My CFO, if we, if we collect, if we raise user fees, that those new user fees are above the tax cap. They're not included in the tax cap calculation.
So, none of the current user fees are included in the revenue cap?
No.
Okay. That is new.
Yep. I always, just as surprised as you.
So, the attorney.
That's my question.
So, nobody consulted with me before this was said tonight. But, I do think that's actually correct, I was just going to pull the ordinance real fast, and probably doing it on the fly isn't, but it is, it's, what the regulation is, is the total amount of tax that can be levied or imposed. So, that's what the cap is. Although, yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to take a look at that.
Right, we'll look at it and get some more information out, but I'm pretty confident that our assessment of it, after talking to Ms. Brady, was incorrect. So, we want to fix that.
Can the attorney maybe send us a memo when it gets all figured out?
Yeah, I'll, I'm going to get you a memo generally on the tax cap, it's just been busy, so I'll get with you on that.
Mr. Williams, I expect you don't have an answer for this, but do you have an estimate on, on what the total revenue the borough gets from user fees?
I don't have that information in my fingertips right now, but I can get it for you.
I think we'd like to know that, too. All right, anything else?
I do have two more things, real quick, so, real quick, our quality stats, nothing's changed since last time we met, but I'll just update you real quick, we haven't had any stage alerts in a week or so. North Pole, we've had one, stage one alerts, we've had seven days of that, stage two alerts, we've had twenty-seven days. In Fairbanks, we've had ten stage one days, and we've had six stage two days. Our preliminary numbers showing exceedances, of course, we analyze the data once we get all done with that. In North Pole, we've had forty-one exceedance days, and in Fairbanks, we've had five days. So far, we've issued two hundred and twelve writing letters this past season, and two citations. And that's where we're at right now with that. And, good transition into air quality, we're having a town hall meeting on February twenty-eighth. I believe the clerks have looked at it as a meeting that the Assembly could attend if they want to. It'll be February twenty-eighth, Wednesday, six P.M. at Noelene Library. We'll have Mayor Castle and Mayor Ward there, I'm not sure where Mayor Mavill is going to be, I think he's out of town that night. We do have some guests, Denise Koch from D E C will be there, she's the D E C Air Quality Director. And then we're going to have Dan Brown, he's the EPA Region Ten Administrator, his duty title is EPA Fairbanks Project Manager. So, we'll have a person from Region Ten EPA there to help answer questions. So, that's all I got for tonight, I'll take any questions.
Questions for the Chief of Staff, Ms. Major.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Mr. Lajewski.
I was just curious how many pending citations are out there?
Um, I don't think we have any pending right now, there's some, I don't think we do. I would have heard about that. It's got to.
Can I make a comment?
We're going to get a chance to do that later.
All right, any other questions for the Chief of Staff? All right, let's move on to reports of special and standing committees, I'm going to start on my left, Ms. Major.
As one of the legislative liaisons for the Assembly, I'll just say, had a great couple of days in Juneau with Ms. Dodge, the Presiding Officer, and some great meetings with our senators and our representatives locally, to talk about some of the issues that we're facing in ways that they can, that they can help us, and then also some good discussion regarding A and L, and sort of the not-so-good news, and I know both the mayor and Ms. Dodge will have more information when they come back, that it was pretty resounding that the state has a $2.2 billion deferred maintenance issue, and any thought that we might get some money from the state for capital investment or improvement, seems like it's not going to happen. That seemed like it was a pretty resounding comment across the board, but I can just say, you know, those legislators are working hard in Juneau on our behalf, and it was great to see that policy in action.
All right, thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Just on committee stuff?
Yeah, nothing, committee reports at this point, same. Mr. Quest?
Thank you. The Sustainability Commission had a special work session yesterday, it also included the meeting, there was an update on the C R F, and, but the bulk of the meeting was spent workshopping potential ideas and formats for open houses. The Sustainability Commission is making it their initial first priority to, you know, in kind of, we gave them some guidance in trying to discover themselves, they're trying to bring in as many ideas from residents of the borough. They think that the most effective way to do that is to continue these town halls, there was the one in North Pole, they'd like to do several over the coming months, starting in the spring. And, and so, they're trying to create, you know, that structure, so that's something that they can implement. The next meeting is on the fourteenth of March, which is a great day if you like the rational numbers. It's at six-thirty, it'll be at the Noelene Library. Previously, scheduled on the agenda was going to be a training meeting, and it may still end up being, but it sounded like they were considering, and I guess we'll see the agenda here in a bit, but it sounded like the agenda, nine-seventeen, the training session, would be a continuation of the discussion about the town hall framework, and the reason I think they're considering changing that is just for expediency sake. The Evolution Control Commission will meet on the twentieth of March, which is a great day if you like meetings, it's my birthday. But, it will be a regular meeting, they'll, they'll be having their first hearings of various, so, that's different for them. And, that's all I have on committees. Thank you.
Mr. Cooper.
I had the privilege of attending the F Matt's pre-policy meeting last week, and the F Matt's meeting next week on the Wednesday of twenty-eight, from one to three, because Mr. Lawrence will be out of town. Of note on the agenda, for next week will be a discussion of the pedestrian path, Yankovic Road, still an issue for discussion out there. Two finance committee-related issues, a little out of the ordinary to have a finance report during the session, but I thought it'd be good to talk about, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I attended the school district, or school board work session on Monday, where the budget was introduced, and that was the first look that the school board had at the district administration's proposed budget. I thought it was a very good exercise for Mr. Williams and I to be there, we gave a presentation, or Mr. Williams really gave the presentation, on art for maintenance issues, the revenue cap, a few other issues, I talked a little bit about process, it was worthwhile for us to stay through the entire work session, because we were able to hear what various board members were thinking as they were going through this for the first time, and I thought it really was useful to have a dialogue, because we were able to[1420.13]